All right, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, you apply, United States of America, Free Republic, which stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
It's different without Paul screwing up my cadence.
Oh, well. He'll be here in an hour.
Yeah. All right, so this is the fiscal year 25 budget workshop. No changes to the agenda. No, that's tomorrow. I mean, that's later today. Anyway, what do you got, Mike?
So you see, I put on your desk, I realized just a few minutes ago that wasn't part of the budget package. My budget message was updated from the original one I put out because there was a couple more changes. And basically, it's the 25, FI 25 budget for the town, like, probably setting forth total budget of $9,465,942,000 in general fund portion being, portion beings, that's the overall budget with, I'm sorry, with the general budget being of $7,937,094. And enterprise portion being $907,450. And the bond portion being $600,021,3098. And we recommend a mileage rate, which already went through the council on the first time, of 5.9999 compared with the mileage rate of last year of 5.9810. And this basically allows us to fund our projects, keep up with inflation. And as you get further into the note, it talks about different expenses, if you flip onto the second page. That we have increased all our insurances. And health insurance is probably looking at about 25 percent. We're looking at other options to lower and stuff, but it's not looking too promising right now. We've still gotta figure out some things. But even overall, it's four and a half, 4.8 to 9 percent even for workers' comp and stuff. We had an additional fee this year for 800 megahertz. It's a one-time fee for police and fire of almost $19,000. This also will fund, for the first time, the flock cameras by town budget, not donation, in adding an additional two cameras, the police chief has requested. It's also requesting two patrol cars for the police department. Will be adding an additional patrol car from replacing one. Replacing a generator from the fire department, we're looking at getting a grant to reimburse this, but right now would be about $75,000 we asked for to replace the fire department where it's rusted and old and unserviceable. So it's getting to the point we have to replace it. Then, street drainage projects for, or street improvement projects for Shannon, South Shannon Avenue, South Palm Avenue, and Orlando Boulevard, 100, 500 block. And there's, we're carrying $375,000 for cash carry forward to help pay for the paving. Street drainage on Miami Avenue, 300 block, Watson Drive, 500 block, Genesee, 400 block. And Oakland Avenue, we have 400 block, but we have money to move forward. That'll be later on in the council meeting. We'll ask about that, which would make that moot. Then Orlando Park, to replace the kids' fire truck in there, resurface the basketball court, and either do something where the half basketball court is, or to put a pickleball court, which has been recommended by the Parks and Rec, but it's not a done deal yet. We put additional money aside for the fifth add median plants, which we're in the process of redoing that stuff to come up with FDOT standards. And hopefully, it won't be that much, but I put from cash carried forward, $370,000 from the 251, I think will be under that budget, but just so we had the money there. Enterprise, there's money in there, we put in there to continue with the urban planner, so we have $100,000 on there. So. I don't know if there's any questions particularly, or?
Stu, you have anything?
I have a couple, just a couple. First of all, thanks for the, thanks to you and Jennifer and all for good work doing this. It's really delicate job to balance the mileage rate and yet provide full services and make improvements. I am a little concerned, as we discussed about, do we have enough money to cover deteriorating buildings, or the potential for deteriorating buildings?
Yeah.
As we know here, you don't know that you have a problem till the roof leaves. And then you've got a big problem, and expensive one. Even if it were covered by insurance, it takes a while to get it back, and, you know, big transition on that. I want to make sure we cover, that is covered. Got a couple thoughts. Well, let's go to the median. Might as well have a hot topic. It's expensive for a little teeny plants. And to pay somebody FDOT approves, almost $100,000 to watch somebody else plant them, it's just ludicrous. I would just, and we're not voting on anything, so I'll say it the way I feel. We really should, my thought is, back with them. Don't put them in. Take out what we're gonna take out, pay for it, do it attractively, put in the up lighting like Mark recommends, and move forward that way. And if we lose the FDOT money, so be it. They've been nothing but a pain in the butt on this project. Got a question on the pickleball court, and this is really just a generic question. In the pickleball court, all for having parks that, you know, serve all age groups and needs. So important. Do we have to have additional lighting? Because, you know, I would imagine most residents would want to use a pickleball court, would want to use it in the evenings, because, you know, it's just too darn hot out. Do we, is it adequately lit the way it is, or do we have to improve the lighting?
In the summertime, I don't think you would have to.
Closer.
Park.
Closer, is that better?
Yeah.
Summertime, I don't think you would need to, because 8:30 gets dark, park closes at 9:00. Summer, winter time, yes, we probably would need some lighting. And no, that was not put into the cost.
No, I know what added to the cost, I just don't, don't have an idea what it would add.
No, I don't.
It might be, it might be a good thing to know before we commit the monies.
Will do.
It could also be something where we do the court this year and next year, get some lights.
Exactly. I mean, this is a generalized statement. And the subject I always hate to ask is about, do we need restrooms in Orlando Park? It's been a hot subject as long as I can remember, and not a very pleasant one to discuss. So it's a question not necessarily to be answered tonight, but to maybe be evaluated.
Questions you ask when you don't have to face reelection.
Exactly. It's been a hot subject for a long time.
I member the meeting.
So that pretty much summarizes mine. Again, I think we've done a fantastic job, and thank you very much for it.
Doug?
I have a number of topics. I don't know if we want to address the topics explicitly, or we just kind of walk down the list and then come back to debating or discussing specific topics. Some of them are just clarifying questions.
Whatever.
Okay.
It's just us and two residents.
Our friends, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So on, and under the professional services on slide, or page 17, at least, or serves, the Adobe file is concerned, page 17, the numbering doesn't quite match up with what Adobe thinks it is. There's a...
Page 17 of the PDF, or page 17 is on a page.
Yeah, that's what I'm, sorry, my apologies here. It's under professional services.
Is this page? Doug? That one?
Probably 19.
Yeah, professional services, so under 514, it decreases from, from 161 to, so 136. What, that's a pretty substantial decrease. Is it, what's associated with, with that? Yeah, I'm just asking why the, why the, why the decrease from the 36,000 to 1,000, excuse me, the 515 sub, subpart 313. It's a decrease of 35,000.
That's the reason, because this year was our, the year for our planning stuff, and we had the-
So the capital improvement planning?
Improvement plan, everything. So we have, updating our capital improvement plan with the state and everything, so that's where it rolled off.
Okay, so probably last year, somebody maybe asked the question why it went up from 1,000 to 35,000. I'll try to remember that for-
Yeah.
-five years from now. I'm still doing this. Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up on that question?
By all means.
Okay. So that doesn't have to do with, like, any consulting services we might have wanted to use with, like, a town planner?
No, that is just for the planning services we use for, when we, with this, we use for different projects and stuff.
Yep.
With things through him.
Okay. I think you had last year set aside specifically some money, or if we wanted to use the town planner, but I think it was not necessarily under this. It was more like as like a capital expenditure, maybe?
I do have money set aside, A, in enterprise area.
Okay.
And there is some money set aside, and you're talking about the fund balance forward. We had some money set aside for if anything ever starts with Fifth Avenue.
Yep, okay. And I guess my question is, because I think we might have had an intent to try to use some of that this year, but we might have not done so yet. Is that carrying over? Would that be carrying over for, to next year, for any?
The money that we had this year, we used.
All of it?
Yeah, we're, for like the Nance Park area in Wavecrest.
Yep.
Yeah, we used all that money.
Okay. Which page would that be, just so I can, like, look at it really quick and?
That would be back on the, with 54, 541, 545?
Page numbers 33 and 34?
Yeah.
All right, sorry. Thank you.
Oh, on, on page 22, page number 22 for police department expenses, there's a, the capital patrol, or two patrol vehicles at 124,000. So no carrier from last year. Not fussing with the, the number, give with that. But do we have, is there, between you and Chief, is there kind of a look ahead for when we, do we understand when we're?
Yes.
When we're replacing vehicles?
Replacement schedule, that's why we're due to replace.
Generally, is it, what, what is the cadence? I'm just, just curious. Is it like every, every other year we plan to buy?
No, we, sometimes every year, and we're, the chief is interested in adding a take-home program to it.
Yeah.
And we would-
Hang on.
That would require more replacement as it goes on, so, but we, some years we replace one or two, some years we, very rarely do we not have one. This last year was like a few years we didn't have to replace.
And there's also been delays in supply chain, as our department is aware of? Curious, the vehicles, which vehicles are we replacing?
There would be the SUV for the police department.
Mm-hmm.
The supervisor vehicle.
Mm-hmm. Is there, then, is the second one a, an addition to the fleet, or were you-
An addition to the fleet.
Okay. Okay. All right, so that was that one. So Public Works, let me find the right page, because my numbering, either I was bleary-eyed late last night when I was doing this, or something's changed. Anyways, on Public Works, looks like we're adding two part-time positions?
One part-time position.
One part-time. I don't know why I thought two, maybe, maybe I was in the, I misread that. Because I was gonna say, if there were two, would we, would we be better off just making one full-time? But I saw that the-
Yeah, no, it's only one part-time, we're, okay. To help out on weekends and stuff.
Right, I'm fine with that, okay with that. I like the idea with the drainage and maintenance on 469. 640, still in Public Works. EV vehicle, is that just fancy for, we're gonna buy a golf cart?
It's a kind of a different golf cart. It's got air conditioning and stuff like that. We're buying two, one for enterprise and one for-
I saw that later on, yeah.
And they're, Melbourne Beach has a very similar one they just went to for their parking enforcement in Public Works. And that way, it gives a protection from the weather, like, when it rained the other day, the parking enforcement person was drenched from head to toe, because it's got, like, plastic curtains to go down and stuff, plus gives a little climate control, so they can actually cool down, because it's-
A little bit, it's a, it's a hot job, man.
Yeah.
Resurface the basketball court, I'm good with that. What is topper for V18?
That's Public Works, so you need to get a topper, they want to get a topper on one of the pickup trucks, vehicle number 18.
Vehicle number 18, okay. It was just throwing me what it was.
Oh, and it's, the, what they want to do is, basically that way they can keep their tools in there and locked, and safe, they have to un-remove them every night and everything else like that.
Okay. Okay. We'll come back around to pickleball court. Is the fire truck in Orlando Park? Because this is not a real fire truck, Chief, just, just so you know. Don't get jealous, just trying to encroach on your, your go-work. Is it really 10K for that?
No, it's actually almost 14.
Yeah.
I mean-
Tell me about it.
Anything that says playground in front of it, it's expensive.
Wow. I mean, they last a long time, generally speaking.
It did, it actually did. We refurbished it about two years ago, and it's passed its lifetime, so it's time to do-
I was sticker shocked on the, on that.
Same here.
I gathered that would be sent, I thought it'd be half of that.
I should show you the budget for the Nance Park playground.
How about we surplus the truck, fire, the current fire truck, we get a new one, was just-
Sell the long doggers, and they can take it around to their beach, their beach pad. Okay. I would like to come back around to the pickleball court when the, when the group at large, maybe, has some more questions. I don't want to pile on individually, incrementally along the way. Holiday tree, you and I have talked about that. That's the renting of the holiday tree?
Well, originally, we were looking at purchase it, but now, because of the fact I didn't really joke-
Because of the insurance, or the, or the limited liability?
The warranty wasn't like-
Warranty, that's the right word.
Yeah, the warranty of it, like, blew over and stuff, that's our fault, not-
So that's likely, this is gonna come out, and go into, like, the recurring cost, which is less than 12?
Yeah.
Okay. Sticking with Parks and Rec, sorry, Joe. On 753, which is Lily Park? So everybody else is staying the same. Lily is doubling from basically five, flat, to 10, to 10. What, what are we getting there? It's a nice park, don't get me wrong.
One of the additional sidewalk, remember?
Two new benches.
Okay. 753?
No, 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 location.
Oh, Lily Park?
Yeah.
Yeah. We've, then you went-
Where's Lily Park?
Pickle bench, or pickle bench, picnic bench.
It's by the retention-
Sidewalk to go up to it. So.
Ethan Riverside.
Riverside.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I know.
That's where we do the bench.
They put, like, a, a place for picnic table, sorry, picnic, pickleball table, for the picnic table, and sidewalk to go up there, so it's ADA compliant.
Okay. I was just curious, because it's, you know, got $3 parks barely. Okay. And then, last one for Joe, I promise. We have, and I just don't remember this, and I'm probably misremembering, we have the Halloween party line item? We still do the Halloween party, just not the haunted house portion.
We do the Halloween party with a combination of the Which Way 5K, so I use that money to help them pay for the events up there, like the dunk booth and the DJ and-
This is where I'm remembering things of the past and not conflating it with today, so.
So, like, we'll hold it this year, I believe it's August, or October 12th, so they'll do the Halloween party in combination with the Which Way 5K.
Okay. You know, the, do we, and this is an open-ended question, for going back a little bit to the pier, because we have a quarter million set aside for that, do we have any feel for if that is anywhere close to enough?
Yeah, I believe Joe got a quote just for the repair, and it was like 100 and something?
I think it was 134.
Yeah, so just for the repairs on that, and then the money for the, the estimated money from there, we cover the kayak launch.
Right.
But we're hoping to get grants, too. That money's there.
Fair enough. I just wanted to understand, from a feel standpoint, do we, do we have a target, do we have a cost estimate that's recent?
Yeah.
Given inflationary pressures?
Yeah, and I got, I've spoken to our town engineer about it, too, and things.
Okay. Switching over to enterprise, so it was interesting, between the two enterprise funds, one and two, we had, last year, between the two of them, we spent 48K on lifeguards, which it sounds right?
Yeah.
But the budget this year is only 42K? Because with the lifeguard situation, I was paying a little bit of attention.
We took, so last year, we were estimating what it'd be.
Yeah.
And we, we actually came a little bit under budget, that's why we just did that.
It just seemed odd that we went down, given the kerfuffle-
Yeah.
About lifeguard expenses. So, okay.
We're hoping to hear something a little bit later from County Commission.
September 15th.
Good luck with that. And then EV, it's similar, there's EV, there's an EV vehicle on, on the enterprise fund, that's a separate EV vehicle, similar, same make and model, essentially, one for enterprise parking fund, the other for, for Public Works.
Yeah, yes.
I know the bathhouse has the roof issue structure, is that reflected in the numbers?
That is not reflected in the numbers.
I know that's a more recent finding.
Let's say, let in the last week.
Yeah.
So we're working on some resolutions for that. It'll be at the council meeting and stuff, I can discuss that further, and some other options.
So you, so in short, where there's no issue, we're working to get a cost estimate for the, and how that would be, how that would be remediated, either in the current year budget, or in the next year's budget?
Correct. Once we resolve the issue with the breeze-through, that's leaning over.
Right.
And we can keep the bathrooms open then. So it'll just be a matter of that, and I've worked with the town engineer, he's getting some pricing, and we've got some designs in our ready for a prefab, similar with the county uses.
Right, and I saw, and we talked about this, the reallocation in the revenue side of things with regards to enterprise one and enterprise two, expected parking revenue, given the data-driven that we now have based on the kiosks, as opposed to just the coinage, where we didn't have a good insight. So that's what, that's part of the big change in some of the, that we see in the, on the revenue side of things, but it essentially is balanced out to be about the same.
Balanced out to be about the same, which you're seeing the, the true data-driven numbers, how we have kiosk and actual, we can track every parking space individually where we couldn't before, with money coming in, when we just had people paying cash or change.
Right. And then you and I talked about this, but I wanted to put it in front of the council, was the consideration for putting in the budget and line item expensing for the Chamber, Melbourne Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah.
Become a member from the town. Many of the other municipalities are members of the Melbourne Chamber of Commerce, and it would potentially be a benefit to us, and soliciting and being advocacy for our town in terms of businesses. And then, for the record, Molly, I just did want to note, we forgot to do it in any of the previous councils, is that I do not wish to receive a salary for the fiscal year 24, 25, if I said that right, no, 25, 26.
25.
Dang it. 25, 26, and you can fold that back into the general budget.
Just go over on that subject, I'll do the same, but we'll do, we'll do enterprise fund. Sorry, Joe. It used to go to you.
Still go to him.
It does, I guess. That's right. Yeah.
Gonna get a nicer stereo in that EV. Okay. Those are all the questions that I had, thank you. We come back to the pickleball court in Orlando Park, though.
Okay.
Real quick, Chief, what's the advantage of take-home or drive-home vehicles?
So I actually, I wrote a memorandum to the town manager, it's about three pages long, if you happen to supply it to you, but it's an incentive for recruitment and retention. Other agencies, Beachside and throughout the county, have take-home, either full-time take-home program or modified take-home program. It gets the cars out of the salt air that they sit in for 24/7/365. It's better for the engine and maintenance, because we're not idling, you know, for hours and hours, because you have to consider idle time also. Putting a little bit of highway miles, highway speeds and all that's good for, for, to clean out the vehicles. Ownership, the officers will take better care of the vehicles, because I have already written a policy a while back that says if they don't take care of the cars, one, one person could ruin the program for everybody. So the police would kind of police themselves and keep, make sure the vehicles are good. And, you know, it's just, basically for, it's a very good incentive for, for retaining officers and a recruitment tool for me, to say that we can, you know, you have a take-home vehicle.
If I may. Previous place I lived, we did the same thing, well, probably now 30 years ago. And when we did that, we found that, actually, the cars were lasting longer. Normally, we were wearing them out about every five years, and then extended them out to a little over seven. So it was paying, it was paying for itself.
And will be a full-time, like, every officer? I'm just wondering.
So we have a vehicle assigned to every officer right now, with the exception of the sergeants and with lieutenant. If we got the extra vehicle in, our problem is if a car goes down, it goes in the shop, we would need a pool vehicle, as it were. So with adding the extra vehicle, then yes, I could start at least a modified program. Maybe the officers could take it home on the days that they work. What I'm trying to do, though, is I'm trying to eliminate taking up a lot of visitor parking out here also. So we do a take-home program. We have 12 spaces out, or 18 spaces that are occupied by about 12 employees at any given time during the work week. You know, parking is difficult here. We have to park our vehicles across the street in a lot that's not monitored, that kind of thing. So I eventually want to get to a full-time take-home car program, and I'm, I'm working on that. So with the extra vehicle, that would certainly help get me in closer to that.
Cool. Lauren?
I don't deserve to go next. How about Mr. Miller?
All right.
Go last. I was late, I apologize.
All good. All right. And I apologize, I might ask about certain line items that weren't required about before, and if I do, just give me a quick answer, and I'll be like, oh, yeah, I remember. On the professional services, and some of this is just, you know, education for me, right? I mean, just want to learn here. The engineering services, professional services, 552.310, dropping 10 grand. Just curious what, is that because of all the road projects that we had this past year, or like stormwater?
Were we at which?
All right, on the professional services, this would be page number 19 at the bottom?
Okay, thank you.
552.310, professional services for engineering.
310 is even 20 and 20.
Yeah, sometimes we just kind of look at where we spent this year and stuff. So if we spent a lot like the year before, we just kind of lowered a little bit, I think.
I don't have any notes on that. I think we just spent more engineering and Joe's part, so we did-
Yeah, our part.
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering, where do, yeah, what did we spend the engineering on this past year, I guess? Or for this, this current year's budget, that we wouldn't be next year?
I'd have to get that number for you.
Okay.
Can get it.
And then, the next page, page 20, the election expense, 519.493. Just curious, because I, granted, this year is presidential election.
Correct.
And maybe that costs more for the town, because I know the town, you know, has an election each year. So I'm just wondering, the $10,000 drop in election expense?
We're responsible for the election costs, and on a presidential year, we're not, but other years, we are. So we budget 11, that's what our cost is, by the, estimated by the supervisor election and things for everything, to pay for the polls to be open and everything, and the ballots and stuff.
Gotcha, it's because, it's because we're not responsible for the cost this year.
Right.
Okay.
Exactly, like last year, we have unopposed.
Right.
We save that $11,000.
That, that's, oh, nice. That's interesting, so a year that you would think it might be more expensive, it actually saves us money.
Yeah. We don't know till after, you know, the election qualifying period closes.
Right, for the unopposed aspect, but you say on presidential years, though, you get-
Doesn't really matter, yeah. Mental expenses.
And then, under the same, on the same page, the computer supplies, I'm assuming, is that just like replacement of computers? Where it's like 1,000 to 5,000?
Yeah, when, the reason is, because we're having to replace some computers coming up and things, or outdated, so we know we need a little more money. That's where we're kind of still learning, as we've, we've been in this, like, 18 months with having a professional services.
Yep.
So we've kind of had to adjust some numbers and things based upon those.
Okay. Yeah, I just figured, like, a 4,000 increase is probably actual computers, not like, I needed wireless mouse or something.
No, no.
Real quick, on, on that same page, the newsletter, I know we've talked about getting rid of it, and I know, Mike, at one point, you mentioned that it may be a requirement for various notifications and advertisements. Real quick, on, on that same page, the newsletter, I know we've talked about getting rid of it, and I know Mike, at one point you mentioned that it may be a requirement for various notifications and advertisements. Do you know if we need to have the newsletter? Or can we, can we do an opt-in paper only?
We've been researching that and stuff, I believe Molly's been working on it. We could look at going that way, we just got everybody on board. We could print some copies out here and make them available in town hall and things and mailing them.
Yeah, yeah, instead of mailing them to everybody, I mean, I don't even know if I get one. I assume I get one, but I don't know where it goes.
One gets mailed to every resident in Indian Atlantic, or residence.
Right, right.
So.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, we could look at getting rid of that, you know, what, ten years ago, the, you know, how do you say, the, the older crowd that would be interested didn't retire using computers, where everybody now that is retired has used computers.
Yeah. And it looks like we, looking at doing ourselves, we could print copies out, doesn't have to be in color, but like I said, black and white off our own machine and put it out there in between the website, where now we're emailing things out, posting it on the website. It can be available to sign up with more people, encourage to sign up and things.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
Do you, for postage, Mike, do you use the EDDM drop for everyone, which is much cheaper, or is it individual metered postage?
No, it's, we do it through the printing place and a mailing place, they do it all.
Okay, so the postage is metered.
Yeah, we don't put it every mailbox.
Okay, so that may actually, interestingly enough, that may actually drive up the cost, because when you look at EDDM, it's about one-third of the postage cost if it's dropped at every location.
But EDDM would go to probably three times as many places.
Yeah, depends on the printing. So is it currently an opt-in? Are people opting out this year, or, I'm trying to understand?
We don't have an opt-in or opt-out for the mailing.
Amount.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what I was suggesting.
So your printing mailings are still the same, and then you control your postage for the costs.
I was suggesting an opt-in.
But I understand now where you're going, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question also, Meg. Satellite and harbor, I think, both do advertising within their newsletters. Any thoughts if that's a value to offset the cost of it? If we want to keep it as a paper document?
I guess we could think, look at that, we've talked, instead of, we haven't talked about doing advertisements and things, and I guess we have to come up with a policy, we did do that, you know, do they have to be residents of the town, or, you know, do we want to limit what it is, content? Which would be kind of hard with, you know, First Amendment rights and things.
I'd only copy somebody's program, I wouldn't create one.
I mean, I was just curious, what are, what are we, what's the budget line item for, for this?
Thirty-five hundred.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a huge amount, but, yeah.
I think most residents would prefer, there was one less piece of quote-unquote junk mail.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. We can explore that option. Like we put in next, we're working on a newsletter now to go out after the qualifications close, and we put something in there, an article about, hey, this is gonna, you know, stop working, or we could decide that we want to do it just on election, you know, we can do one a year instead of there and do the rest electronic and things. So there's, you could do a hybrid, or you could do the full thing.
Okay. And if we go that, even regardless of whether we go that route or not, do we post it on the website currently?
Yeah, we post it on our website currently.
And is there a way to subscribe?
Yeah.
As well, to receive it? Oh, yeah, sure, of course, with the new feature, I forget what it's called. Okay, fair. We could direct, we could direct folks to that, new residents come in, then we don't have to worry about managing email lists and all that jazz.
Yeah, that's kind of nice, actually. And they can self-subscribe, if they don't want to get anymore, they unsubscribe.
It's in color on the, on the website.
Yes, it is.
Right.
All righty. So now over page twenty-two, the law enforcement. And again, my questions are really just, so I can understand how these things work. The increase on holiday, does that pay? I'm looking for, just wondering, is that an increase in the amount we pay, the increase of the amount of shifts or officers that we're doing for holiday?
Basically, we kind of look at that, you know, we did this year and things, and we've had a raise in salaries and stuff, and so that includes.
Kind of commensurate with that.
Yeah.
Okay, great. The eight hundred, is that?
Mega Hertz.
Is it mega Hertz? That's what it's gonna be, my guess. Completely ignorant, I don't know. Is that like our radio system, walkie-talkie type thing? Okay.
So that, yeah, they said police and fire have both eight hundred megahertz. We maintain like the twelve thousands for the lines. We run lines from here, from eight hundred megahertz radios, up to E O C in Rockledge, back and forth to tie into there, then the other stuff is maintenance.
Lines that go all the way up there?
We have T-one lines that go all the way up there.
Yeah, they're walkie-talk.
Right, 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 right. Interesting. So that's part, that's, maintenance is dealing with those type of things, making sure they continue to work well?
Yeah, they, with the maintenance, like, we're paying them extra money this year for a one-time fee. We pay for the, the whole backbone, and they divide it up by how many radios each place has, and all, total radios in the county, eight hundred megahertz, and they divide it up by each agency and things.
Ah, it's like pro-rated out, kind of.
So yeah, so it's a certain cost per radio.
Cool. And then, not sure, I think Doug might have asked this, council member Wright, other equipment, the twenty thousand increase?
That's the amount I talked about earlier for the flock cameras.
Okay, that's.
Two additional cameras.
Perfect. Thank you. Then, my question on fire. We just answered the eight hundred megahertz maintenance, and then the special pay incentive on, for fire.
So on the special pay incentive and things, we increase the amount, it's on the, on the council gender, the firefighter contract. So at one point, we were paying the paramedic incentive inside of the salary, and we're pulling it back out to be an incentive.
We step back a second, and what's the special pay incentive? How does that work?
So they get incentive, there's a couple different things. They get incentive, like, if they're a fire inspector, they get an extra thousand dollar incentive a year.
Okay.
And if they're a paramedic, solo paramedic, not anything else.
Yep.
Right now, they get five thousand dollars per year, and we're upping that to seven thousand coming this fiscal year in a contract proposal.
So incentives become more qualified, have other levels of certification to which are services that are provided to the town?
Correct. If you, on the fire side, we're kind of reorganizing right now. We have three firefighters, EMTs, and three fire captains are all paramedics. Well, as we retired and we're hard finding paramedics that could qualify as a captain also, because you want experience in there, and you know, like a twenty-five-year-old coming who's a paramedic and a firefighter, and also another captain. So we've broken it out into changing the vision to have one fire captain, two fire lieutenants, and then three firefighters, EMTs, and another, then we're paramedic, solo paramedics. So they could be a regular firefighter, paramedic, solo, they don't have to be a captain anymore, so that pays the incentive, and it's very similar to what other, like, cities are paying and things. So they're paying anywhere from like seven thousand to twelve thousand right now, coming up.
Great. Sounds like kind of like helps with our overall staffing for it, probably, right?
Yeah. That's been, the fire chief's been recommending this, because we see how, you know, attracting of new employees and things.
Yep. Trying to be quick here. Okay, so public works, second line item, the part-time salaries. Curious, so that didn't exist before, now we're doing it? Strategy-wise, just hard to keep people, or it's?
Now, we have a full-time staff, but it's hard to keep up. Public works is like.
Right.
Those overworked.
I know.
Understaffed.
Yep.
So to help with weekends, and also to help like with billing, cleaning in the weekends and stuff, Joe always wanted to hire a part-time person, that's the one, it's one person only, and I think he can explain it better.
Great.
Yeah, I'd like to, this part-time person would come on Friday nights to clean all town hall once a week, as well as work on the weekends and holidays.
Perfect. Cool.
It would free up my guys during the week.
Absolutely. Be more effective. Equipment rental for public works, curious if that's, we have something in mind for that, specific that we need?
Yes, that was for the hanging the banners.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So it's, is it a bucket truck?
It's more like a pull-behind trailer mounted.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
Are we, I know at one point.
But we may be able to jump off Melby.
Yes, I was gonna say, I didn't know, maybe we could try. So that'd be great, obviously budget the expense, but if we can save it, that'd be awesome.
Absolutely.
Good deal. And then equipment repairs, dropping, I guess we had a lot more this past year or this prior year?
Actually, we added a line item because we never had a vehicle maintenance in there.
Ah, gotcha.
So we, instead of twenty thousand dollars for our equipment maintenance, we made it fifteen for the vehicles and five for the equipment.
Okay. And then the solid waste, what's, what is that for? And then what's the big drop?
We pay a solid waste fee when we go dump stuff at the dump.
Oh, okay, that's right.
And for a long time, we had credit there, we weren't paying anything for many years, and all of a sudden, the credit went away and they started charging us. So the ten thousand kind of was a plug-in number, because we didn't know what it was gonna run, and this kind of equaled out. Yeah, we found out what the real rate was. Like, I just signed a purchase order, and invoice today was like a hundred and fifteen dollars for a run-up there for the solid waste for this month.
Good deal. We did the parks. Yep. Oh, and just so, I guess kind of for like, the public's knowledge, because I don't think everyone's aware, but what, would you explain what the difference is between enterprise one and enterprise two?
Sure. Enterprise one is the Wavecrest area, Watson Beach or Sunrise Beach, and then Tampa Beach. And enterprise two is in the Nance Park area, and that's a separate enterprise because we leased that property from the county and the state, and so the funds there, like, we can't make profits in there and stuff in enterprise funds, so we have to make sure that money is spent in that, that certain area.
Yep.
Technically, we have one account it goes into, but.
Right, 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 but you gotta, yeah, makes sense. That's it for me. Lauren?
Great. Mike, thank you, by the way, for the text, I appreciate it.
No problem.
I have my alarm set for ten after, which was incorrect, thank you. Could you just summarize the biggest value you think to each department is gaining in this particular budget from their viewpoint? What would the chief say, what would Joe say? Is the big, good step up for this year for each department?
I think for like, for the public works and stuff, getting that extra part-time employee is probably a big step. It's something he's been asking for and things like that, so that's gonna help out with personnel and manning and things, like having a, you know, somebody to cover, because if somebody's on vacation and things, they can kind of use that part-time to flex that, plus the weekends and things like you talked about. Probably for the police department, trying to add that extra patrol vehicle, and adding the extra flock cameras that they've asked for and stuff, so as a, you know, move forward, trying to get a take-home, some type of, some type of program going, we would need to add more patrol cars. And then for the fire department, I think the restructuring, it's kind of in the budget but not in the budget, but the restructuring of how the department is, I think it'll be a better, you have that, you know, line of command going up. So the captain, now there's three captains. Well, now you have one captain, so the chief's not around, he's in charge, the lieutenant's will answer to him, so I think that's a big advantage on that portion.
Are you meaning sort of that line of authority is more clear, or is it helpful for retention and recruitment?
Well, it's, A, helpful for recruitment, because like I've said earlier, trying to hire a paramedic firefighter, a solo paramedic these days is difficult. You know, you can, like, you can get somebody straight out of the paramedic school or has very little experience, but are they there to lead and qualify? You know, we've already kind of started that program, because we did have a captain retire, and we did promote a lieutenant right now, and he, he has a lot of experience, comes even battalion chief and deputy chief in Orlando and things. So he comes a lot of experience like that, so it gives us a little bit more in recruiting capabilities.
How about finance group for Jen's group? What would be the biggest gain for her? I know we've invested quite a bit, and we've been very pleased with the ability to use the cloud software from B S and A. Are there any changes in this budget that really help that department?
Not really, because we're invested in B S A Cloud. In fact, I was, we were just teaching chief medics today how to use the B S A Cloud, on his budget and stuff. So it opens up for all department, had to see where they are on their budget and things like that. It opens up everywhere else. We are looking at the click it and fix it, and fix it and click it thing, so that, we're in a process already of having that, that's gonna help Joe out too. That's included in there. So it'll help out with those work orders and things like that. We've already had our first meetings with them, and they're in a process setting up and things.
Great. What are the biggest improvements you feel in this budget that will be visible services or service improvements to residents? What sort of things will they go, wow, this is a little bit different? Are there particular things in there that you feel stand out?
Yeah, I think we've got a lot more, you know, funds put aside, because we only had that certain bond money for stormwater. We've got, you know, money set aside for stormwater and moving aggressively with the projects, we're doing a lot of paving and things. Like, for example, this year, supposed to start this week, but I guess not till next week, South Riverside Drive, which we've been planning for long, but we're also doing up at Wayne and Watson, up in the, one of the blocks of those, and a couple of little streets, stack two-hundred and, three-hundred and four-hundred block of Sixth Avenue this year. And then next year, we, like I said, we have in there, was it, I think it's Ramona.
It's okay, you don't have to go into details, I was just trying to get an idea. I'm hearing you say infrastructure improvements are what really, some of the things being driven. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, good. Wanted to ask, if this budget has savings or allocations reserved, whatever term you want to use, related to projects that may be sought for appropriations? I know we have to pony up, right, for appropriations, and I'm just wondering whether there was, you had anything in here related to thinking towards that?
Sure. The Pier at Riverside Drive, that project, the fire department generator, we actually have a grant in there for now, we haven't had approved all the way, but we need to, no matter where we place it, so we're hoping to get the cost of that. And we're looking from, like, the generator, from going from a diesel generator like we have now, it'd be more efficient to get natural gas in there, we're working on getting a line run to run off of natural gas. A, we save not having to buy a big tank and store stuff, which something more to rust, so it's cheaper for the generator, and also it's more sustainable and natural gas won't go out. We don't have to worry about having deliveries of fuel and stuff.
And the funding source for those would be grants mainly?
Yeah, there's a mitigation grant, we're working on that, and with the pier, we're gonna look at a FERDAP grant, and also a FINE grant, which is inland navigation, for that, that would be for the kayak launch.
Great. And I know I want to leave time for pickleball here, Doug, Doug will want to get that in. Are you open to a few suggestions that may help analysis of this for next time?
Yeah.
As, as we're thinking, super. And these are things I noticed as I've worked through budgets over the years. One is, and it sort of came up tonight, if you have a note on the lines where the adjustments are being made, let's say based on a previous year actual spend, you may get fewer questions of why up or down. You could just say adjusted to reflect previous year's actuals, and that would just reduce some of the questions. Again, these are just suggestions, Mike, these are not, please do not take them as criticism. The other thing was a column for percentage change year over year, because then you can scan down really quickly and you can see percent change, not just the numbers on them. Because what I, what I try to do is, I know the, the version of the PDF, you can't search easily, I OCR'd it, but because it's mostly scans, I can't search it easily, and I, extracting it to Excel was sort of a manual process. If the Excel version could be given along with attachments, someone like me who's used to opening it, it helps analyzing, because then I can quick crank up maybe the columns, even if you didn't put in the percentage change, I'd do that, because it would jump out and go, oh, these were big dollar items with bigger changes. I'd read your notes in the column, and then if I had questions, I could even ask prior to this workshop. So those were just some thoughts I've seen in other, other budgets that were, were helpful. Does it sound reasonable or, or helpful?
Yeah.
Okay, great. The other questions, you all brought them up, so thank you.
Yeah, something real quick, right?
Yeah, a real quick one. Zip line. What are the plans?
So at this point, we're still, and I just talked to councilman Wright last Friday, I haven't shared that with Joe yet, he's been a little busy on some things. One of the possibilities we're looking at is maybe replacing it with something similar to West Melbourne, where it's not a zip line line, it's about thirty-eight.
It's an, actually, actually, it's a fifty-foot gravity line, so it's, there's no cable, it's.
Like a rail.
Like a trolley, like a rail. So, yeah, exactly, it's a rail. And you can have the seated one, as well as the one you stand up on.
Yeah. It's in the mid-thirties, thirty-four, thirty-eight thousand dollars for the whole thing.
I want to say it's a little cheaper than that, probably about twenty, twenty-eight.
And is that one, one line?
That's, no, that's for two, fifty-foot long. It's fifteen foot shy, because I think what's there is sixty-five feet.
And the rollers will survive our environment?
Yeah, those survive a lot better than a bolt.
We'll have, be having some funding, and we haven't got all the money yet for the, like, a good wind project from, from D E P. In fact, I was working on some today, so we'd have some money to help fund that, to make the improvement.
Doug, pickleball, and your, and your hatred for the sport?
On the record, say, is I enjoy playing pickleball, except, except for I can't beat my nineteen-year-old son, but that's a different problem. So my, my question is, or my, I guess, say my reservation with putting in Orlando Park is, or a couple, a couple facets, one of which I do know, I do know I'd live in that area, as most, some of us do, and I go by the park on a regular basis, and at least on the weekends, there are many occasions where the half-court is being used for, for basketball, as the full court or the mostly full court is also being used. So I have hesitations about removing that from, from circulation, as, you know, folks will want to go and play, and play basketball. I have reservations about, you know, what would the maintenance be? I'm assuming the maintenance for a basketball court is pretty low, but the reservation for pickleball court, and then if we were, if we were envisioning putting fencing around it, not, doesn't include lighting, because then, give me, give a mouse a cookie, that, that's gonna be the next request. It wasn't clear to me a hundred percent if, if the plan was to, to take the half-court and turn it into a pickleball, if there would be somewhere else, which has, I would be concerned with the green space, loss of green space. And then the other avenue to that is, you know, inevitably, if you've ever been around pickleball court, it's not quiet, because of that, and, and, well, I mean, folks are gonna, no, no correlation necessarily to the, the noise ordinance, but it's going to change the profile of Orlando Park in that regard. You know, and how, how does that fit with, with the purpose? So I'd be interested to hear Parks and Rec's perspective on why they believe it's, it's appropriate to put one there, because, you know, we have six tennis courts lined with pickleball courts at, at the Hoover, Indian Atlantic Hoover complex, there's two, one of the two at Rickman are lined for pickle, they're, they're lit, and then two of the, the two at Flutie are lined and lit for pickle. So there's ample resources adjacent to the town, albeit not in the, the boundary. So there's ample resources adjacent to the town, albeit not in the, the boundaries thereof. So it, I get the, the desire to have it locally, but given the, the recent addition, when we were up in Michigan this summer, that, when the, the town would go to in the month of July, they, they added four pickleball courts. But in the years prior, they, they solicited donations, you know, at the, at the farmer's market, that they would, they solicited donations to, to fund that because there was a group of residents that were very interested in it. And it's very well done. I don't know the history if it was all matching, if it was all public donations or if it was otherwise. So I just, I'm fine with, if we wanted to, you know, keep it in the budget and, and, and not necessarily, that doesn't imply that we have agreed to proceed, or I wasn't. From my perspective, I won't speak for anybody else, but doesn't imply that I would, I agree with proceeding. But my, my concern is that we go forward with implementing a pickleball court at, at Orlando. We'd remove a, a half-court basketball that kids and, and adults and use. And it's not, I don't see the need for it necessarily, given, given the other resources available to the community.
Is the cost in the budget for complete, like, build from ground zero or is it just redoing what we have?
The half-court needs to be replaced to begin with.
So completely tear it up? So
Tear it up.
The cost will be the same whether you do it there or somewhere else?
It's a little bit less because you're not doing the pickup ball lines and everything, but it's not as, you don't need the net. So it's probably a little, it's a little cheaper.
But what I'm asking is
I know what you're, yeah.
It wouldn't cost any more there to do pickleball than it would be pickleball
Correct.
somewhere else?
Correct.
Okay. So theoretically, we could maybe do, like Nance Park, get rid of the, the volleyball court. Not saying we want to. I never see it getting used, but people say it gets used.
There are folks who used it for 30 years.
Beach tennis is really using it a lot.
Okay.
Yeah, and you have an issue there because that's a enterprise budget.
Oh, right.
And another one. No matter what, if we decide not to go with pickleball or you all decide not to go with pickleball and go with
It could be used for resurfacing, reconditioning the court.
It's got to be, something's got to be done.
Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah, it's not in the best of shape.
May I make one other observation on it? I see a lot of younger kids playing on this, I don't know when you passed it, on the second court, the half-court. A lot of the, the big boys, big girls will be on the, the main court. So you'd be, there are a lot of smaller folks using it for a range of things. So just be considerate that also if you're pulling it away, it may be something that the younger kids would have to shift to the other playground or equipment or other locations and probably aren't going to shoot hoops as much if larger players are playing on the main court.
Okay. Anything else? I just want to rebut these concerns because I don't think that they're in actual practice, everyday life legitimately going to be an issue. As Joe and I have talked before, you can still leave the basketball hoop there.
Well, now you have pickleball and basketball hate. They're going to fight over each other.
There's going to be an underlying theme for this evening, right? And let's remember this. We're all neighbors and it's about living together in a reasonable manner and behaving reasonably and acting reasonably and treating others with respect, okay? And so, and I'm not like coming down on you at all, Doug, but I just think that in the grand scheme of things, it's not going to create any additional issues. It's just going to be another amenity that many in the community would really enjoy. And we know, you know, Orlando Park is very much a community neighborhood park, right? And so it would be nice to have that feature without having to drive to Hoover or to Melbourne Beach and, and be able to use it, you know, for many of us just to walk there, hop on our bikes. Again, as another, another feature for, you know, community activity. I don't think there will be an issue with noise because the five-on-five basketball games that occur when it's the summertime and all the college kids are home, that's like the loudest situation. And I'm not aware of any of the neighbors there having any issue with that. So I just think, you know, it's another feature and it, we don't have to get rid of the basketball. We can, we can work together. Anything else to wrap it up? It would make a lot of people, and, and for the record, I'm a tennis guy, so I'm not even really wanting to play on it. I just know a lot of people in the, in the town are very interested in it. Okay. Wrap it up. All right, meeting adjourned. We'll give you 30 seconds. Paul, you want to assume the position?
You know, I was going to be hit by a pickleball or a basketball. I'd rather be hit by a pickleball.
Yeah. Depends where. Really. Let's see, changes to agenda. Town manager's added four things, one of which we're going to move up because we have a guest from Satellite Beach. So we won't keep here, keep her here all night. So we'll get, move on that. Presentations, we don't have any public announcement or public comments for non-agenda items. Anybody that wants to speak for any item that is not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. Three-minute time limit. And, yeah.
Jim?
At the last town council meeting, there were a number of falsehoods stated. So this evening, I'd like to set the record straight. I was accused by one speaker of stating I wanted to bulldoze the motel site. This is false. I've never said that, nor written such a statement. One of my neighbors has written that and I think it reflects the frustration of all the nuisances and problems that we have, but it's not my position. My position, and I think the position of almost all my neighbors, is to simply ask one simple thing of the town council and town officials, and that's the proper interpretation and rigorous enforcement of the code of ordinances. The ordinance were written with a goal of ensuring reasonable and controlled use of property that is developed and modified properly. For business activities, that means the right businesses at the right size, at the right locations. As town council members, you took an oath to uphold the ordinances and, and that's why we continue to come to you seeking your help. The second falsehood stated by one of the speakers who obviously didn't know the facts is that music stops by 8:30 or so. This is also false. All you have to do is look at the spreadsheets provided by the chief and you'll, you'll see that there's a lot of later calls. And my, we should have known this was coming. Nothing could be further from the truth. When my wife and I purchased our condo, which was by a factor of 10, the biggest investment we'd ever made in our life, you can bet we did due diligence, hours and hours of it. Section 113, 337 on tourist zones stated hotels and motels of not less than 10 units are permitted to have related service activities such as restaurants or shops, provided such uses are situated on and are part of the hotel or motel building. Section 113-4 stated restaurant means an enclosed building which food and beverages are prepared and served to the public at tables in a dining room located therein and shall not include open-air or drive-in restaurants. And section 113, 249, which allows an outdoor cafe attached to an indoor restaurant, states in part nine, no music, public address system or outdoor entertainment is allowed. So the issue here is not a lack of due diligence, nor that myself and my neighbors are idiots. The problem is a lack of proper interpretation and rigorous enforcement of the ordinances. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Public comment, non-agenda item. Vinnie? Vinnie, is this your card? Does this count or you got something else?
Yes, no, that was my card. I'm sorry. Molly's the best, though.
No, that's all right. I was just making sure.
Start the timer, chief. Let's go. Three minutes.
I was just making sure you didn't have anything.
Just real quick, Vinnie Toronto, 313, 10 terrace. I sent you all the minutes. Your Sustainable Community and Resiliency Committee, the little committee that could, put together a countywide first municipality, municipality sustainability meeting. We had 14 of the 16 municipalities participate. They all couldn't show up. We'd, I'd like to thank Florida Tech, Dr. Nicolau. They hosted us at CAMID for free. We were only supposed to be there, I think, two and a half, half-hours. I had to ask everybody to leave after three and a half or four hours. It was great. It was really good. There were lots of things that came from it. One of them you'll hear in a little bit. But there is lots of desire to work in between municipalities on, on some of these things because there's no border on a street between a city. And so if you can do one thing in one city, can you do it in another city? And then does that help residents understand it and make it bigger? So there will be some things that we're working on. Again, you'll hear one tonight, which I thought wasn't going to be for six or eight months. It just happened in like two weeks. But you'll be hearing some other things from us going forward about working with other municipalities and, and doing things on a bigger scale and hopefully making it easier for our residents. That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Vinnie.
Any other public comment, non-agenda item? All right. Public announcements, there are openings on the following boards and committees. The Budget and Finance, Civil Service, Code Enforcement, Heritage Committee, Parks, Recreation and Beautification Committee, and the Pension Board, General Employees. Candidate qualifying packets for the 2024 municipal election are available at Town Hall. Qualifying period ends or began last Thursday at noon and is tomorrow, August 15th at noon. Is that right? Contact Town Clerk, MCAR, indilandic.com or 321-723-2242 for more information. Consent agenda, is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I will make a motion for the consent agenda and for items one through four and number six and pull number five for clarification.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items one, two, three, four, and six, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Stu, item number five.
Yeah, Mike, item number five.
Yeah, I guess some of the language was a little confusing for number five where it's for the, replacing the inlet box at Wayne and Avenue and North Riverside Drive, but also removing corrugated metal pipes, not replacing them with corrugated metal pipes. I guess it's bad wording. So it'll be using an HDAS, whatever, AD plastic, which is FDOT certified and everything.
Can we amend the, amend the item so it shows correctly?
Yeah.
I mean, the quote is pretty clear. But yeah, I agree with the wording.
Okay. The verbiage I used maybe wasn't.
I appreciate it, Stu. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, I will move that we accept item number five and it's from the consent agenda as modified.
I'll second.
All those in favor, approving item number five. Say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. All right. So as I mentioned, we're going to move up one item from new business up to the very front. Item E, new business, solar EV chargers. Did you guys get this information from Vinnie? Did you send that to them? Just me?
I sent it to everybody.
That's right, you sent. That's right.
Should be a handout on your desk too.
Vinnie, do you want to talk about it?
And the Sustainability and Planning Director from Satellite Beach, Sandra Leone, is here as well. She was at the Brevard Municipal Sustainability Committee. I know one of your priorities or the council has talked about looking at EV chargers. And one of the things Sandra had been looking at is that the Barrier Island is considered a charging desert. There's really only four in the, on the Barrier Island or five, something like that. So that's something that, that we wanted to do. She had sent me a link about these beams, which are an all-in-one solar-powered EV charger. And you literally just drop them off. They fit exactly where a spot, parking spot is, no infrastructure, nothing. They've got solar panels that will attenuate to make sure that they're getting the most sun. That's all there is to it. And so she had said that Satellite Beach was working on a grant to get those. I was disappointed that we wouldn't be able to get in on that grant. And then there was some personnel changes in Satellite Beach, which caused them to look for a partner that would be interesting in purchasing three to complete the grant. It's a 20, 80% match, so it's pretty, pretty economical. And there's a, includes, includes a five-year warranty. Each one comes in, I think, around $18,000. And I know there's particulars, I think, that Mike sent around. The problem, not the problem, but there is a short turnaround on this, which is the only, the only thing. The grant is two weeks, I think, is the deadline? August 28th is the deadline to submit the grant. I know Satellite Beach has a council meeting next week on which they will then vote on submitting the grant. So the way it looks at now, Satellite Beach would get three at 18, we would get three, is what Mike had said, at 18, and then we would complete, complete the grant. 18 apiece.
This came together pretty quickly. I had the beam stuff over the weekend that Vinnie had sent me, but I had a phone call from him yesterday afternoon, late in the afternoon about this. And he talked about we were interested in one of them. I said I'm going to be selfish after we went through the whole thing of being interested in three of them and stuff. So that's where, I'd see it's a good deal. I also have an email. I went, just talked to Sandra before meeting too, that there is a profit sharing on it. They use ChargePoint for charging it and stuff. So we would get some revenue from there. Not sure the exact amount, kind of a fast-moving thing that's moving on. But I think it would be, we'd be dipping our toe into EV charging then with very little out-of-pocket and, you know, we could take these each. Solar unit has two chargers, so we don't have to put them all in one location. So I, I know I spoke to the mayor, he happened to be in earlier and say, and, and Vinnie and stuff a little bit yesterday and Sandra. And like, you know, my suggestion is, and it's in the packet, is that we do it and that we put one in Nance Park, which we give it two chargers. One somewhere down Wave Crest around, you know, the X-Wendy's or that area. And maybe either consider one at Town Hall out here and I, not Town Hall, Watson, but that's by permit only and things.
I mentioned maybe at Sixth, but we can figure that out later.
Yeah, well, we'd have to have location.
We would need to know the address for, for the grant, just as a, just as a formality for the, for the delivery. But they are totally, again, they're movable. There's no infrastructure. You drop them right into a spot with the overhang of the, of the solar panel. And then if you want to move them, the video shows, I don't know, but it's really cool. They just like pull a trailer over it, put some hooks on it and they move it. So for five-year warranty, you know, at 18K each, that's, to me, is a, is a pretty
Right.
And 20, 80% match. I mean, I, you know, we do a lot of lagoon work and that, that's not, that's not a number that, that we usually see.
What fiscal year would this be under the budget?
Well, we'd have to move some money around for next year. It would be, we wouldn't know anything until afterwards. We're just applying for it. So we could find some money, you know,
Yeah.
funded in next year or worst case at 2026, but I don't know how long the grant takes to go through. Hopefully not that long.
Yeah.
I don't know what the turnaround is, I mean.
So.
For those at home, she's not sure what the turnaround would be. Just helping with the mic.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll find the money.
Stu, comments, questions?
I love it. But we need to do it. I mean, it's
All right, Doug?
Rated for salt air, beachside hurricanes.
165 mile per hour. One of the things that I did see in the videos, they were like, you know, if there's a crazy need to move it, you can, you know, you move it to an area that may be covered. But it's rated at 165. The units that we're buying too have what they call an emergency access panel. And so if there is a storm, you can literally put that like outside the fire station and you can plug in your normal outlets to use. So, you know, the fire station could use that. And that's each one has that emergency access panel. You know, I, I, Indy Atlantic, I've lived, born and raised here. You can see the salt air sometimes at night. So I, I'm not, I, I can't speak. Oh, Sandra, please. Do you want to come up and tell them?
They are also, they went through a hurricane in St. Croix and it's been there for years. The, that was one of our questions, how will it tolerate the salt air? And basically they say rinse it down, wash it down every six months and you're good. So.
That would be my next question in terms of maintenance up or upkeep.
Just a little rinsing off and
Yeah, I mean, it's also contained for rain, so you just hose it down. And again, the five-year warranty side on it is, you know.
I missed the, I didn't look too closely, honestly, but the, are there batteries built in?
Built in.
Okay, so it's charged.
And this includes the upgraded battery pack, the price that we're getting. This is the, the top of the line.
It has a five-year warranty on the batteries. Remember, we're quick reading through this stuff quickly.
Yes.
Battery storage is 43 KW. Excuse me, Penny, what is the weight of this? Because there is, there
I knew you were going to ask me this question, Joe, and so my scientific answer is five elephants. No, I don't, I don't.
There's going to be a footer to hold this thing up.
No.
Really?
Nothing.
No, nothing. It's engineered to be completely balanced on its own.
There's no fasteners? There's nothing that bolted into the ground? How much copper is in this thing?
I even asked if it was put on an uneven, just a gravel area because for us to put by the library is not a
There's no catalytic converters in it either.
Chief asked if I could find an item that he would have to defend around town, so this is it, chief.
Okay, okay. So you, you were saying it's, it's self-balancing, so you literally just sit it down?
Yes.
You, you deliver, the delivery is like a long bed trailer, but instead of sitting on the trailer, it literally sits below the trailer, and they just hook it, and they lift it, and then they just drive it and put it wherever. It's balanced.
It's 10,500 pounds.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Five tons.
It's made in San Diego.
Paul?
Just out of curiosity, you mentioned there's a five-year warranty on the batteries. When the batteries give out, what do you do with them?
You have to replace them.
I think you would recycle them, probably in town, the county has a battery recycling, and then you would have to replace them. But I have not had a bunch of time to look into this.
So there's actually, I did an electronic event with the city of Satellite Beach where we got rid of all the batteries, computers, hard drives, telephones, cellular, anything that was hazardous waste, so it is possible to recycle, I mean, to get them.
And we're going to do one of those here in town. Again, it's one of those, one of those things.
We talked, we talked.
Yeah, we're going to try to do it countywide, that way every resident can go to their own town hall in the same day and just mass the communications. I think it would be brilliant, so, sorry.
So from continuing down the, kind of the owner, cost of ownership, so for, during a five-year period, if something goes wrong, is it a full, full warranty, bumper-to-bumper, powertrain only?
It's a one-year, bumper-to-bumper. And then the one that we got for this price, it's extended, so the five years.
Full five years.
Yeah, and then I think it's 10 years.
Yeah.
For some components.
Yes, some parts and stuff.
Ten years or something, I remember.
Just additional four years manufacturer warranty.
Yeah, that was though, that was the addition we added on.
Right, so it's a one, one year plus the four years.
One-year standard, and we added on the four-year.
It's nine years for the remote monitoring and management services, so, for a total of 10 years, so it would give you an additional nine years on the remote stuff.
You're going to try to put it in the bed of a truck, Joe? See, we're doing some calculations.
Well, and so I'm just guessing, if it's in or, if, this would never happen in Nance Park, but if somebody hit it with a car, what happens?
So, so I, I, that was, that was a concern that I saw, because I know Boardwalk, we've got somebody that just wants to drive onto the beach, and God bless them, but I, you know, the, the way this works is you actually, the car is on the platform, and so if you hit it.
Okay, so that's part, that base is that it talked about the grip pad, or it was part of the integrated structure.
Yeah, the tension point, obviously, on the pedestal would be, I don't know what it can withstand, you know, a Kia, Volvo, I don't know, but as far as the weight, the car would be on it.
Right.
Lauren?
Does the town, does the town own it, or are we leasing it?
No, you own it.
Own it.
So I encourage you, Mike, to look into the total cost of ownership. I know it's, it's an interesting idea, but again, we, we own it if something happens to it. I'd, I'd project out, encourage you to project out the total cost of ownership. We don't know about the sharing agreement, you said, so we buy it, but we don't know.
I think we just sent that information, and I, I know, again, this is moving quick.
Really quick, yeah.
Well, it is, it needs to be considered, because we're taking away parking spaces that also generate revenue in enterprise zones. What's the out-of-pocket costs that are going to be upfront for the town, for the taxpayer?
There's $18,028.84 per unit, with a total cost of $54,086.43 for the three units.
Okay, so there's 54, so not insignificant amount, 54, okay.
I'd like to mention, you said loss of space. You're not losing a space, because the space is going to be utilized with, you know, a vehicle on it.
Agreed, you're not losing a space, but it may be a change in revenue for that location, depending on what they're doing. Okay, so we have James, who is a really good expert, who has spoken, and he's a good understander and agnostic across EV technology. I would, and he's indicated to work with you, I'd ask him on this, just particular, including the, because he thinks about the type of plugs, the, he knows all the details. He talked to us a few meetings ago, and more information than I could absorb in one shot. I would ask him both, honestly, pros, cons of this, and get that recommendation from him to get an idea. If there's anything else, we would have to understand that may cost us money in ownership.
What I would ask, and I agree with you, Lauren, total cost of ownership, that's a huge important thing. What I would ask maybe of the council is to say, like, you know, yes, we could move forward, but let's go ahead and, you know, talk to that guy or whatever, so we get some additional information, because that would give, you know, a day or two or three to get that information that we're looking for.
Yeah, I, I know, obviously, well, people don't know, we have two EVs, so I know a little bit about it, and James' point about the connection points pertains more to the level-three chargers, which are, you know, we see up at Dunk.
Superchargers.
Yeah, the supercharger, that kind of thing.
So these are more of a trickle charge?
It's a level-two.
Level-two.
Good, thank you, thank you for clarifying.
Right, right.
Don't put your tongue on it.
I'm an ICE guy, okay.
Right, right.
Good, no, that, that's helpful, again, these are the details that matter, and there'll be two, per unit, you'll have two charging, it looks like there's two. One says add a charger of your choice, so two would be on it.
Right, and, and it's the standard J1772 connection, which everybody's going away from, but everybody who.
Has an adapter.
Right, Tesla has the adapter, so, and it's a very small price for the, for that adapter, and everybody else is going to the Tesla charger connection, so that won't be an issue as far as swapping out, we won't, we would need to swap out the, the connection point.
Folks would bring the adapter with them.
Right.
Yeah, and, and while it sounds mundane, Mike, the last thing, I, I dig into the agreement just to make sure, are we indemnifying them, right? What types of things do we own, when we own it, how we do? This is the type of thing you have Paul do, the quick looksee of, of the types of things in, in the agreement that might be something you say, well, I need to negotiate it, or it might be the type of contract you're very comfortable with. I would just not like to see a bunch of hidden costs that are later on, when you're already spending this, right? The excitement will go so far, it's a good idea, I'm, I get the idea and the ability to have this type of service, so as you said, it's, it's sort of a, a charging desert, but let's make, let's do due diligence on the costs.
We do have another meeting, is it the 23rd of this month?
Yeah, but you've got to know this beforehand, because the deadline's the 28th, and she's going to have to have everything together.
Has, has Satellite Beach had their attorney or budget look at total cost? And not, not that it would replace it, Lauren, but it would give additional data, do you know, at the town?
I just provided it to our intern city manager.
Okay.
So it's being reviewed.
I have one other question, and this is from previous experiences. How long has the company been in business? Where do their financials, are they sound?
Good question, I don't have an answer for that at the moment.
Can we get that information, just, I hate to fund a startup.
Agree, agree.
Brett?
I don't have much to add. I guess, back me off of what Lauren said, just inquire with our insurer to see if this, you know, yeah.
Microphone.
Vinnie, I owe you an apology, because he pulled me aside, and we had a conversation about this at the back-to-school event.
People want to hear you at home, then, they want to hear you.
Yeah, I would just, you know, inquire with our insurer, I don't know if this, you know what I mean, has a history of, like, damaging vehicles, and an increased premium, I doubt it, but just a simple phone call. Otherwise, it looks like an interesting concept.
So how do, Mike, how do you want to move forward? Can we move forward tentatively, pending that?
Beams around, I was looking up, so, they've been around since 2006, so.
There's one question answered.
Yeah, I mean, solar tech isn't new, but this particular adaptation perhaps was. Anyways, so I would recommend, part, separate from, or maybe in part with whatever the council decides, that we would get in touch with your counterpart at Satellite Beach to find out what due diligence they have done, in addition to help speed that along rather than having to repeat it, so that perhaps, I'm sure they had similar considerations, our thoughts are not unique.
Are, are we giving a go-ahead with, to Mike if he feels, after talking to James, and it might be, is Brittany the one that is collaborating with? Okay, and is Nick writing the grant?
No, I'm writing the grant.
You're writing the grant?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Do we, do we go ahead with provision that if Mike has a red flag or concerns, he could say whoa and, and come back, and that gives that, or do you prefer to say no, it just should come back to us? I don't quite understand the timing. I don't want to rush, but I also want to give the latitude, if things look good, you let the decisions be made.
So, question for you, writing the grant, can you, how much extra work is it to fill all our stuff out without knowing that we're going to commit?
Well, I've started.
Don't tell us that.
Just because, I mean, I was, you know, kind of getting the impression that it would be something, and the grant is long, so I, you know, have a limited amount of time. I've already spent a couple weeks on this, so.
Are they reusable? I mean, usually in the grants, there's similar declarations and, and things, or is this rather unique, that you have to craft something very different for Satellite compared to us?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to merge the two together, where I'm putting Satellite and Indy Atlantic together.
There was a clause that allowed for units of government, and so that's the, that's the area we're trying.
To go with.
It'd need to be six units.
Right, so my point was, is it extra work for you to just write it out as if we're going to participate, then on August 23rd, we'll make a final vote? Does that completely throw you off? Feel free to say yes. Okay, then we won't do that.
We either say no tonight, or we say yes conditionally with those, those conditions spelled out.
So to be honest, I mean, I made a copy of what I previously wrote, so if you decide to go no, then, you know, I mean, I always have my.
No, I, yeah, I understand, I was saying, in terms of if how we could elect to proceed forward, we would like to proceed forward with Mike to go do that diligence with our approval, given certain criteria, whatever we specify, on a timeline that supports your, that supports your timely submittal.
The other option, too, although Mike does want to be selfish, although I love him, is you could do one or two, and then we could look for another beachside municipality that's in the EV desert to, you know, to fill out the grant. But that is, again, another step, and there's not a, yeah, time is short. So, but, but, but that was, that was my thought originally, is let's get three other municipalities together, each get one, and Mike's like, yo, I want all of them, I'm like, I love you, Mike, let's do this.
And you speak from a standpoint of, you, Mike, you believe that there's room in the, but fiscally, that, that it's.
We could find the money for, yes.
For this round number, 60K?
Yeah.
Not, not including accounting potentially some of the other action items.
We didn't have to cut anything else, we'd find the money.
I mean, I think as we move forward pending final review.
How about this suggestion, how about conditional approval, due to due diligence, I'll run the information through Paul and work with Vinnie and Sandra?
I'd like James, too. I mean, James is our local expert, and running it by him, if he has any pros or cons. Again, we don't know what we don't know, so a, a phone call or two might unearth something that is good, and it might unearth something that is then answered very quickly as, oh, this is, yeah, and, and the other thing is, to Stu's point, diligence on the company and how long it exists matters a little bit, too, because if we own them and they do depart or exit or struggle to be solvent for their end of the monitoring, that might be, you know, I wouldn't want a bunch of dead batteries sort of out there that, that we don't know who's going to maintain them.
Joe will.
It was founded in, it was founded 2006, 18 years old.
Do you have a question? When somebody rolls up and wants to plug in, they have to have an account with this company, whoever, whoever is.
ChargePoint.
No, it's a ChargePoint.
The Charge, that's what I, that's what I, whoever, ChargePoint, and they would, whatever revenue, they make payments to ChargePoint.
ChargePoint takes a percentage, an agreement that is made between the cities and, or towns, sorry.
So what are we buying? Because the sun gives the energy for free, we're buying the batteries in the stand.
And giving the space.
Giving the space, what?
And the parking revenue from the space.
And the parking.
Well, the parking revenue would still, could still exist.
And it depends on our share, right? What really will matter a lot is what's the cut?
Or is, or is it that the, that these charging stations are being sold at a discount to, so they can get the, get the, the end unit, end, end units out there for users to engage in?
And just to clarify my point about the company itself, I'm really more interested in the financials. If it's a company that's in the green, doing well, one thing, it's a company that's struggling to break even, a different story.
Absolutely, we can look at all those, you know, and get you answers, it's just.
I mean, it should be easy stuff.
Is it, is it publicly traded company or private, do you know?
Public.
I, I don't know.
Okay, so.
These were not questions that were asked of me, so.
If it's public, then grabbing the financials will be rather straightforward.
Right.
If it's a private, and if it's private and they want to sell their product, should be pretty straightforward also.
Per Yahoo, they have a negative earnings per share right now.
They have a what, Brett Stark?
That doesn't necessarily mean that they're, earnings per share.
Sales and revenue.
So do you, Doug, or, or Mr. Mayor, are you going to make a motion on this, and that'll, that'll give Mike?
Doug, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, that we conditionally approve the town manager to, interim, to an agreement with the city of Satellite Beach to purchase three of the solar EV chargers as presented, with due diligence to understand the.
Business case.
Business case, the insurance and liability, and to understand.
Cost of ownership.
Cost of ownership.
And consult with James on the technology.
And then to get a, get a, get a professional opinion from.
James Moore is his name.
James Moore with regards to compatibility and, and technology features of EV, of this station, as we're looking forward through the, through the life of it. The, and then the only other thing I would, I would add is, if there is, when do we would project it into life? Is there a known projected into life, and what would the, what would that look like in terms of a disposal?
Is there a second?
May I ask, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything in your motion related to the decision related to the profit sharing? Mike can make unilateral decision based on the percentage he, he wants, or?
I don't view it as a, I would like to understand, better understand that it, that it is equitable agreement.
Okay, so you don't need to modify your motion then?
Don't need to modify the motion.
I'll second.
All right, well, we just had a discussion amongst ourselves, is there any public comment? All right, all right. All those in favor of approving the motion as stated by Doug, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Sandra, you're free to go.
Thank you.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Going back on the agenda, item C, ordinance to public hearing, ordinance 2024-10, first reading public hearing relating to the regulation of noise.
Ordinance number 2024-10, an ordinance of the town of Indy Atlantic, Brevard County, Florida, relating to the regulation of noise, making findings, repealing and replacing the provisions of Chapter 22, Article 2, Noise of the Town of Indy Atlantic Code of Ordinances, providing definitions, providing a statement of public policy, providing for purpose and application, prohibiting noise disturbance based on a plainly audible standard, providing for activities that are exempt from being a noise disturbance, providing for warnings and penalties, providing for severability and interpretation, and providing for an effective date.
All right, Brett, you and Paul worked on this, so I'll give it to you.
All righty. Before I actually get into the substance of this, I want to address something first. A few things that I hope to never be above is self-reflection, admitting when I may have been in the wrong, and apologizing when it's necessary, and during the discussion of the noise ordinance last time around, Dave Berkman gave public comment. Afterwards, I immediately made two points of clarification, which I still stand by, he knows that, but unfortunately, I didn't stop there, and I went and I continued to give Dave a hard time, kind of gave him a jab, it was uncalled for, it was unnecessary, I shouldn't have done that. I do apologize, Dave. Whether it be Dave or anybody else, I'm a huge proponent of the First Amendment. I don't want anyone to ever feel uncomfortable for giving public comment on, on any issue, so. Wanted to clarify that first and foremost. Now, getting into the substance of this, um, so, you know, I kinda took it upon myself to redraft this. Any criticism that I have of the condition that it was in prior to this, I wanna be clear, is not a reflection at all on our fine town attorney, Mr. Googelman. He was requested to incorporate what the county had done as far as the plainly audible standard into our town code. And so he took it as it had been written by Brevard County and, and proposed it as such. So, um, any of my critiques, certainly not a, a comment on the quality of Paul's work. So, with that, um, all those that were in attendance to the last meeting, we all, you know, kinda came to the determination that, um, the ordinance as Brevard County had proposed it, didn't really fit, uh, the confines and the needs of our small beachside town that is, uh, one square mile and about thirty-three hundred residents, which I think we like to pride ourselves on being a good neighborly community that is reasonable and likes to work together. And importantly, we don't have a large, or really, I mean, we kinda have a little bit of one, but we don't have like a central business district, or an area where there's much nightclubs that produce, you know, a lot of excessive noise. We're predominantly, overwhelmingly, a residential community. So, a lot of the issues that are addressed in the county's ordinance, which are aimed at, um, you know, kinda more commercial centers, they, they just don't fit and they don't apply, and they were unnecessary. It was just too much language that didn't apply. And so the goal was to simplify and streamline this. So, I went through and literally everything. I did the definitions, the, uh, you know, policy, the, um, statement of public policy, purpose and application, everything, and I tried to streamline it to what I thought fit the needs of our town. And I incorporated what I thought was still useful, uh, from our current existing ordinance. And so the proposal is to do a complete repeal of our existing ordinance and a replacement with this new one. Now, understand that, uh, this is a completely volunteer unpaid position for me, and I have a lot of time constraints. So, this is by no means like a, you know, perfect, uh, uh, you know, infallible work product. There are things that I've already caught in it that I would like to tweak. Um, there are also other things in here that it was, they're just like any time, constraints that I put, or days of the week, those are just, you know, random, not random, but they're just suggestions or proposals out there that I want us to all, you know, talk about, think about, kinda figure if it, if it fits the needs of our town. And I'm open to, to all suggestions. So, with that, um, the core of even the county's ordinance, this is why the county is confusing and perplexing that that has so much language and prohibitions and a lot of unnecessary exceptions. The core of it is about what a noise disturbance is. Is that a noise disturbance is the violation. A noise disturbance is defined, uh, in the counties, and, and we carried that over here. And so that is, uh, any noise, sound, vibration, or combination noises, sounds, vibration that may disturb, annoy, or be harmful or injurious to the health or welfare of a reasonable person of ordinary sensibilities. So that's, that's the key there, right? That's what we're honing in on, a reasonable person of ordinary sensibilities. If a reasonable person of ordinary sensibilities may find something to be disturbing, harmful, injurious, then, then it can be considered a noise disturbance and in violation of this. Now, the other key definition is plainly audible, cause this is what a lot of the residents wanted. This is also why we're doing this exercise, and a big part is because, um, we came to learn that the town has a practice of enforcing or regulating or dealing with sound issues that does not match with the language in our current code. Current code does not provide for a plainly audible noise disturbance, and that essentially is how the police department has been handling it. So there is a need to, to update this, so that our language matches our practice. So that, other key definition then is the plainly audible. There's a lot of, you know, noise, sound, component of sound, you know, audio, visual equipment, all these things, but essentially boils down to that can be clearly heard by a person using his or her normal hearing faculties. Okay? In the county's version of plainly audible, and this is an issue that a number of residents have written the town about, they have a part that states, after stating, you know, can be clearly heard by a person using his or her normal hearing faculties, then it adds, at a distance from the property line or right-of-way line of the source of the noise as follows. And it says daytime hours, three hundred feet, nighttime hours, a hundred and fifty feet. I removed that, very intentionally. And it's actually to the benefit of the people who are complaining that it's not in there. I don't think that everyone is thinking it through as far as what that means. The only way to go about doing a noise ordinance in a completely objective manner, cause that's another complaint, is people say that this is too subjective. The only way to do it in a completely objective manner is by the sound level meter situation. Based upon, you know, discussions in the town, individuals on the council, and especially Chief Connor's input, we wanted to go away from using the sound level meter for a number of reasons. And I'm not gonna get into all those specifics right now, cause I will let Chief Connor, he's, he's more qualified to speak about that. I'm not a law enforcement officer, so I have complete, you know, faith and trust in Chief Connor's opinion, and frankly, in all of our officers to be, you know, reasonable individuals in applying this. So I removed that, um, distance requirement, because this is already, no matter what, since the whole core of it is about a reasonable person of ordinary sensibilities, whether or not they're being disturbed by the noise, so it's a subjective situation, why have an objective measurement line, drawing line, in an overall subjective standard? You would really just be hurting yourself in the sense that if you are at two hundred and ninety feet, or you are at three hundred and one feet, do you believe that that eleven feet is gonna make any sort of difference for whether or not you would deem it to be a noise disturbance? So, you could be at three hundred and one feet, oh, yes, I qualify, this is a noise disturbance, or you could be at two hundred and ninety feet and up creek without a paddle, because, hey, sorry. But even more importantly is, what are we gonna do? We're gonna get out a little laser-like line? Are we gonna go on Google Maps and determine that, oh, you're at two hundred and, you know, such feet, oh, you're at three hundred and five feet, oh, sorry, yep. It, it, it's, it's silly. No offense, I'm not trying to be rude, but it just doesn't make practical sense in, in actual application. So, I addressed that, I think in a very fair way, in the actual language of, um, how to determine what is a noise disturbance. So, I cleaned up, getting beyond the definitions, I cleaned up the statement of public policy. There was just a lot of like repeating and kind of excessive language in the county's version, same with the purpose and application. And then kinda reformatted the noise disturbance, noise violation on plainly audible standard. And so, here's how it goes. A, it is prohibited unlawful to cause a noise disturbance. Okay, we got that out of the way. B, sound claimed to be a noise disturbance shall be determined by an enforcement officer based on the following. And now, an enforcement officer could be like our code, you know, enforcement officer, maybe a police, uh, officer. You know, other officers can, can make this determination, and I'll get to that later, but they can make the determination and issue a warning. But when it gets to actually a penalty, that has to be a police officer, in large part, cause it's a misdemeanor. But anyways, so, part B, sound claimed to be a noise disturbance shall be determined by enforcement officer based on the following. One, the officer actually hears or detects the sound personally, or the officer receives statements and evidence from witnesses who heard or detected the sound personally, which the officer deems to be authentic, reliable, and sufficient. Okay, so the officer can show up and do it, or if the witness, you know, has video, and, you know, it's determined to be reliable, authentic, and, and then the officer can use that to issue a warning or a penalty. Two, the officer is able to ascertain the location or original source from which the sound emanates. So that's important, because in the county's version, it says that you had to have a direct line of sight. That's so silly, in my opinion, like, so what if you're in a condo, and again, actually, this is something I do wanna preface. There's a lot of people complaining from a particular, uh, you know, Indian Atlantic One. Those were considered in drafting this. This is not drafted for Indian Atlantic One. This is drafted for the town of Indian Atlantic, which is primarily single-family residential homes. So, if I ever reference that, at any point about what Indian Atlantic One folks, I want to be clear that this was not drafted for them, although their opinions were taken into consideration with everybody else's. So anyways, with that example, what if your condo was around the corner and it does not have a direct line of sight to Publix? Or to Sunrise Park, or whatever it may be that's causing the noise, right? If you had to have a direct line of sight, it would be silly, cause you wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't be able to establish a noise violation. So this, the third part is where I, I really addressed also the direct line of sight and the, um, the distance, why I would wanna remove that. So third says, from the location of where the complaining witness is lawfully and reasonably situated, the sound is plainly audible, which is defined, remember, without using a sound level meter, and without enhancing the officer's or witness's ability to hear the sound, such as through hearing aid or other amplification device. So what that means is, if you're in your house, and you're sitting watching TV, and there's a sound that you can't even enjoy your show, and you're finding it to be a noise disturbance, well, you are at a lawful place that's reasonable, so then invite the officer in, ask them to sit down, have a drink, watch some TV with you, and determine whether or not this is actually a noise disturbance, right? And so, that could be within two hundred feet, that could be within a hundred feet, that could be within fifty feet, that could be five hundred feet. As long as it's a lawful and reasonable location, right? I mean, it's not gonna be reasonable if you show up to somebody else's driveway, uh, and, and couldn't be lawful, it might not be lawful, and then try to claim that there's a noise disturbance, right? So that's a key, a key factor. And then, the fourth part is, based on the totality of circumstances, a reasonable person of ordinary sensibilities would find the sound to be a noise disturbance, which is a little duplicative, since noise disturbance is about, um, you know, reasonable person of ordinary sensibilities, but I wanted to be clear there. So, it's based on the totality of circumstances. I used that phrase intentionally, not a criminal lawyer, only took like one or two criminal classes in law school, and that's the extent of it. But I do remember that the totality of circumstances are regularly used in enforcement of, um, you know, criminal laws, especially because a lot of them, right, are subjective. A lot, like, if somebody is being, you know, causing a public disturbance, or being a nuisance, or reckless driving, um, if an officer wants to do a, a Terry stop, which is, um, you know, search you without an actual written warrant on the spot. A lot of these things, they're all based on the totality of circumstances, of which the officer has to provide articulable facts, right? So they have to have to, you know, write down and state what it is the totality of circumstances that then supports that action. That's where we get to part C, says while examining the totality of circumstances, in addition to any other facts or issues that may be relevant at such time, the enforcement officer shall consider the following to assess whether there is a plainly audible noise disturbance. There's twelve, twelve various, uh, factors. Again, it's not, and I guess we address this in the next part. That's not, um, you know, an exhaustive list. An officer is not required to find any of them. An officer could find none of them to be applicable, but have other articulable facts to establish the totality of circumstances that there is a noise violation, or a noise disturbance. But it's a guideline, it provides a guideline and a basis. In that totality of circumstances factors, the twelfth one addresses the time of day or night that the noise occurs and is reported to the town. So, in doing that, and this is kinda where I took some of what our current code has and blended it in here. Current code says it's seven to ten. They call it a loud and disturbing noise, or something of that nature, and, and, uh, you know, it's like expressly prohibited after ten PM until like six fifty-nine, or seven AM in the morning. So I have the time of day or night the noise occurs and is reported to the town. During the following times and days of the week, an enforcement officer shall apply a more rigorous standard, meaning there shall be a higher threshold for what is required under the totality of circumstances. In other words, it's more difficult to establish a plainly audible noise disturbance. And so that would be, the higher threshold period is Sunday through Thursday, and, and again, this is one of those where I just, it's just a proposal. I'm not, you know what I mean, married to any of this. Sunday through Thursday, seven oh one AM to eight fifty-nine PM, so seven to nine, Sunday through Thursday. And then Friday and Saturday, essentially seven to ten. So it just provides an additional hour on Friday and Saturday. So what I did is I actually made it a little bit more, um, I guess favorable to say the residents who, who, um.
Little more restrictive.
Yeah, exactly, a little bit more restrictive for, for what noise is permissible Sunday through Thursday. So then, subpart D just talks, you know, again, just clarifies that you don't have to find all of those factors, you don't have to find any of them. It's all about assessing the totality of circumstances, and it's left to the prosecutorial discretion of the enforcement officer. I know that makes some people uncomfortable, cause they want this very objective means and, and way for enforcing this, but, you know, whether you realize it or not, the vast majority of laws of which you are subject are to the prosecutorial discretion of the officer. That's every day. Even in sense, even in situations too, where there is an objective means, like say you're getting hit with a radar, right, and you're clearly over, the officer comes and talks to you, you know, there can be extenuating circumstances, or not even, there can just be circumstances for which the officer is like, okay, well, I'm not going to issue you a ticket. I'm not even gonna give you necessarily a formal written warning, I'll just keep, you know, lay you off with a verbal warning. So, that is a very commonplace. Then, I was initially against having certain activities exempt from the noise disturbance because of the fact that this really just boils down to, you know, a reasonable person with ordinary sensibilities, you know. Are, are you finding this to be disturbing or annoying? But, in the end, I, I, I felt that, just for clarity purposes, because unfortunately there are unreasonable people, um, we should enumerate few of them, some of them. The county's had a very extensive list. Um, mine's probably a third of the size. And it's things like emergency vehicles, law enforcement or fire department activities, including training, special events that's approved by the town, other sounds authorized by government permit. Uh, this is a very important one, and I thought of it at the last minute, right before I was emailing this in, I'm so glad I did, and it needs to be, uh, Chief Connor pointed out, I need to add another date to it, but this comes up every single year. Fireworks during times authorized by the town on July fourth and December thirty-first. We also need to add January first. A lot of people don't realize, but the town allows fireworks to be, you know, shot off in our streets, obviously, you know, being safe, complying with other laws, uh, but on those dates. It creates a lot of frustration for a lot of people, but it's allowed. Motor vehicles, vessels, here's an important one, air conditioning, generator or pool pump equipment, and a reasonable condition, that's, you know, exempt. And then, this is, you know, important one for me being able to, as you said, drill my wood on, uh, Sunday. Construction activity or landscape maintenance during the following time periods. And again, you know, these are just like examples that I put out, not married to them. Said Monday through Friday, so construction activity, landscape maintenance. Monday through Friday, ten thirty AM to, or excuse me, seven thirty AM to seven thirty PM. Saturday, eight AM to eight PM. Sunday, nine AM to seven PM. I'm fully amenable to changing that. Then we have warnings and penalties for violation. So, you have to get a warning at first, uh, at the very least. You know, the warning, if you advise the person what the violation is, possible penalty if they fail to eliminate it. The officer has to document it in writing, you know, putting the date, time, property address, name and identity of the person giving the warning, and the facts that comprise the totality of the circumstances to establish the violation, and then provide a reasonable time to comply, um, you know, with the warning. This is another area where I initially had an issue, but it says, reasonable time shall generally be deemed immediately. I toyed with saying, you know, uh, uh, I toyed with revising that, but I kept that. Says, or reasonable diligent person to reduce the noise under the circumstances, but it shall not exceed, initially said five minutes, I put it ten. Should we do fifteen, five, ten? I don't know, that's another area where I'm willing to change it. And then, penalties, um, you can't be given a penalty without warning first. And it's, the penalty, which is a misdemeanor, comes down to two instances. One, if the noise is not eliminated or reduced to an acceptable level within a reasonable period of time after the warning is given. And I realize that one's squishy, and some people have an issue with that one, that is pretty much carried over from the county's ordinance, which many of you that have an issue with explicitly asked for that to be in there. And then, or, this is what I came up with, or the person so warned complies with the warning, but violates this three times within a twenty-four hour period. Kinda like what we did with the trash situation, you know, it's like, it's just, this is America, it's the old three strikes you're out rule, right? We can all, we can all get behind that, I think, right? That's reasonable, right? Third one, third violation, you know, that's a, that's a misdemeanor. And so then, yeah, and the penalty has to be by a police officer, and it's because it's, you know, secondary misdemeanor punishable by a fine of five hundred dollars and/or sixty days imprisonment. secondary misdemeanor punishable by a fine of $500 and/or 60 days imprisonment. Then there's the sound amplification equipment division. That is pretty much, I mean, I cleaned up the language and streamlined it a little bit, but in very large part, that is a copy over from what our current code has. There is a part in it that someone has pointed out and it's a very valid, um, issue that I believe needs to be addressed and revised. Because I think when this, when this sound amplifying equipment section was, um, originally drafted and they set forth the zoning districts in which it is allowed, I don't believe at that time that we had a tourist district. And so I did not include the tourist district. Um, that wasn't intentional, again, that was a copy over. Frankly, I think the tourist district should be included in there because, um, in a lot of ways, it's like a commercial district, I mean, it, a lot of people use the tourist district for Airbnbs and a lot of Airbnbs are large groups of people celebrating or partying, so just naturally they're making more noise than you would get in all the other traditional, uh, residential portions of the town. So that was not intentionally omitted and I do believe it should be added. And, yeah, that's about it, I guess. I'm sure I missed something, but...
Thank you Brett, thank you for your work on, uh, on doing that. I think before we move forward, Paul...
Oh, actually, let me, let me, really quick, sorry. I just have a list of things that I want to preemptively address. Um, all right. So I went over the reason that we went away from the sound meter. I know people are having a tough time with it being, not having this objective standard in there, but that, we intentionally did that specifically at the behest of, uh, Chief Connor, and he'll explain those reasons why. But, you know, the nature of our town, without a large commercial district where that sound meter is most applicable, it, it, you know, we don't have a need for it here. Uh, I already went over why I removed distances, it's actually hurting those people. The fact that it's, um, too subjective, again, I guess I went over that. It's just the nature of it, where you either have the sound meter or you trust our officers to be reasonable. Um, and some people think that it's fine as our ordinance is currently drafted, but again, we need the language to match the actual practice of our officers. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you Brett, Paul, anything?
Just a question for clarification on this. We talked a little bit about penalties. Is it, is it, is it your intent, uh, that this would be enforced, purely by a police officer and by a proceeding in court as opposed to code enforcement?
No, I would think code enforcement, I would rather go the code enfor, code enforcement route, in all honesty. We can still issue fines there, I wasn't really a fan of the 60 days imprisonment. That was a carryover from our current code and the current language in there as far as penalty. But having been on code enforcement, I would rather go that route. So that's, that's probably another area that we need to touch up and tweak.
So that, just, uh, that's what I'm trying to get clear is...
Yep.
Is, is, is it your intent that this goes to court rather than, uh, rather than the alternative of going to code enforcement?
No, I'd rather go to code enforcement. Like, once, once it gets to the penalty, because the warnings are warnings, right? And then, so say you have three warnings in 24 hour period, um, again, I mean, I would personally, I'm open to what other people think, but I would personally rather go to code enforcement. I know some people are going to complain that, oh, once it goes to code enforcement, there's not as much teeth there as far as establishing a violation and, and trying to get corrective action in the perpetrator's behavior. And that may be a fair point, so... Yes, I, I'm certainly open to this penalty area, like kind of needing to massage it and tweak it.
I, I don't, I don't have any feelings one way or another about it, it just, I want to make sure that we're all reading from the same, you know, from the same page.
Yep.
As far as what your intent is.
That's a fair point.
We'd probably have to tweak this language a little bit to...
Yeah, because this does not represent that I would rather go to court enforcement, this is actually more like a court proceeding. But my personal feeling is I would rather it be code enforcement. But again, if the majority says otherwise...
Counsel decides to go forward with it, that's, that's something that we'll tweak.
Yep.
To allow for code enforcement.
Chief, you have any input?
I do. What time do we have? I would just, if it does go to code, I would just be mindful that there's statute out there that if it's an anonymous complaint, we can't even investigate it. So there's that to consider also. So, and I'll, I'll just go down, I made some bullet points, I will not be long, I promise, but, Councilman Miller, I think you did a great job on this. I think the way that it's written, the overview of it, makes it much more defensible in court for the officers if they do have to take an enforcement action. It's cleaner, it's easier to interpret. I do like that the sound meter has been removed and for the following. When the officers use radar or laser to do, to stop a speeder, and we write a citation based on the instrument that we're using, that officer has gone through a 40 hour FDLE certified course. And so that's a full five days where they are out there using the instrument, learning about it, learning about audio Doppler effect, when to use it, when you can't use it, how you have to calibrate it, all that stuff, before they even get a certificate to even turn the radar on. With the sound, the decibel meter or sound meters, there's no such training for law enforcement that I'm aware of, certainly not through FDLE. Now, there's courses I could put my officers through, which probably, I'm assuming be pretty expensive. But if the officers are using that instrument as, as a tool where they would then take enforcement, and it goes to court, and the, somebody brings in a subject matter expert for the defense, the officers are going to get torn up. I mean, we, we're police officers, we're not, you know, we don't do things with pressure waves. And Deputy Mayor Glass brought up last time, he was, he was talking Greek to me when he brought up sound bars and bass and bow, all that other stuff, you know? I turn my, my radio on in my car and I adjust the volume how I like it and that's good enough for me. So, um, in that regard, the sound meter I think would cause more issues for us as on a defense. And then if we do charge, if we do lose a case under an ordinance and we are responsible for paying for, um, the defense, for the attorney for the defense and all that too, so that's something to keep in mind. I think distance is subjective. I, just out of curiosity, I wanted to know how far 300 feet was, and this is just for context. So I took my measuring wheel and I went to the doors on the, on the Fifth Avenue side of Town Hall. And I walked through the lobby and I walked all the way out through the parking lot and I got to 150 feet, which is just on the other side of the parking lot here in the, in the center of the parking spaces, so that's 150 feet. And then I kept going to try and get to 300 feet and I hit the back wall of the fire department bays, because they left their doors open, and so I was able to get in. And I got to 280, about 285, 287 feet, so 300 feet is on the other side of the fire department. 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night, I got patrol officers out there that I got a job to do and we were trying to catch bad guys and things like that. I don't expect them to pull out a measuring wheel or a tape measure or a, a laser tool or even Google Earth, which is highly open to, uh, you know, the defense attorney just destroying that because it's not accurate. It's subjective in the fact that we just can't pinpoint 300 feet or 100 feet or 250 feet, so that, I agree with that being taken out, it just adds something that we have to, to do. I think it just comes down to totality of circumstances and officer discretion, what's reasonable. And that's what we do in our job every day. So there's different levels that we have to go to to establish probable cause and make an arrest and all that. And that starts with a hunch, we think something's going on. And then we go from there and we go and develop reasonable suspicion. Well, why do that make our spidey senses tingle? Let's look into a little bit further. We develop reasonable suspicion and then we can move into probable cause. And those are each finite and we have to articulate how we did that and got to those different steps. Now, once we reach probable cause, and we'll use the instance of writing, you know, stopping somebody for speed, it's the officer's discretion as to whether or not they write a citation. I cannot force a police officer to write a ticket. Um, it's actually illegal for me to do that. So it's up to them to decide, let me talk to this violator, let's see what's going on, are they having a bad day? And then they decide to write a citation. Take a little further to an actual arrestable offense, like a battery, simple batteries and misdemeanor in the state of Florida. The officer, after reviewing everything and all the, um, the totality of the circumstances, what's reasonable, what isn't? Is this a one-off? Did somebody just have an emotional outburst and hit somebody? Are the, a danger to the community, is this something that's likely to happen again? Do we need to remove them physically from this scene? Because if we do, we're going to take them to jail. But if they're just having a bad day and things happen, the officer can do and notice to appear, give them a court date, send them on their way, they sign with a promise to appear in court at a later date and if they don't show up, they get a bench warrant. So I mean, these are things that the officers do on a daily basis. This is something that they are, that, um, they're, they're, they learn in training, it's, it's through just their, their experience. I think plainly audible is just common sense. You know, if I show up unseen and I can hear it and it's, it's annoying, it's, I would determine it being harassing or, you know, if we get complaints from a neighbor, then we're going to go talk to the offending party. We're going to go talk to them and say, hey, your neighbor has made a complaint or we're getting a complaint in the area, can you please turn it down? And again, as I've stated in the past, we get compliance. Sometimes we have to go back, we're like, okay, it's, it's turned, music's turned back up again, please keep it down. But we just don't have that issue. As far as the tourist district goes, that's, uh, and the, most of the time that we do like the amplified music and things, that's going to be in Nance Park, the Witchway 5K, Turtle Crawl, the, we used to have, um, the Long Dogger's events and things like that. So that's where we, we see a lot of the permits that I have to sign and the TM has to sign. So it's kind of, that's pretty much localized in that area. I don't have, we don't have residents going, hey, can we do a sound amplify, um, amplification permit for a block party we want to do? It just, we really don't get those, so, um... Yeah, so I think that's, that's about all I got to say about that, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Thank you Chief. Uh, I'm just going to run down the line. Stu, you got anything?
Had to remember to turn it back on. First of all Brett, thank you very much for what your work. I really appreciate it, it's really the essence of home rule. This is a one, one thing doesn't, one rule doesn't fit all communities. Usually it's expressed like, well, what's good in Miami may not work in Pensacola. This is really saying what works in 300, 3,000 residents may not work in 20,000. So very much appreciate it. The, as I read through this, I believe it's easy to understand. There are a few places you might want to clean it up, as you mentioned, but those are easy to work. I like the idea of not having a distance in there because it makes it actually more effective. And typical example, you know, if I'm out, uh, running my pressure washer, cleaning, you know, cleaning the driveway at a time that's prohibited, fine, you know, my next door neighbor can say, hey, cut it out. The old guy would say, hmm, it's not, you know, I'm not that far away, can't say anything. Much better solution, even to take within this particular building, and I'm not picking on any one condo or any other building. But let's assume that you have a neighbor who watching a football game and you want to watch a concert on television. You need to work it out between you, if you can't, then you have the ability to have the, an officer help mitigate it. And I'm all about mitigation, not fining. So I think, think you're right on target. Really, and really appreciate the work effort between you and Paul on this.
Hey Doug?
Clarifying question, Chief. Early on in your, um, explanations, you've mentioned some, uh, you were not able to investigate an anomalous reporting? What, what is that exactly?
So the law changed, um, pretty recently that if, if somebody phones in an anonymous ordinance violation, we can't... Correct, yeah, we can't take connection on that.
Okay, so for anonymous, so they have to provide, now, in that instance, just from my education, can they, can they request to not be named in the... No, okay, I'm just curious. That's out of our hands, that's not something we're addressing here in this discussion, that's more of an educational, okay, thank you. Brett, a couple of questions. I echo the sentiments of Councilman Glass. Because I, that is not a skillset that I have, uh, being a lawyer, and legally, so you've definitely made it much more easy to read.
You did great on the, uh, policy that you drafted, that contract.
That was before ChatGPT, because I mean, I didn't, I didn't have other sources to consult with. So we talk about elevated, um, during day, daytime hours between the 7:00 AM and the 9:00 or 10:00 PM, that there's a, and I forget the right, the right word, but there's a elevated level is, how do, how do we understand what that, what that standard means in those, in those instances? Or perhaps there's some guidance that the chief can provide in terms of how they, how they deal with that? I'm just curious...
Yeah, it's going to be more, uh, please Chief Connor will be, uh, better because again, and I know it's uncomfortable and it's hard for people to, uh, come to terms with it sometime, but this is just the nature of the law, I mean, a lot of it is squishy. I went to law school, I remember thinking like, all right, you know, we're going to learn these hard and fast rules, right? And I prepare every client now that wants to go into litigation, I say, there's no such thing as the law, okay? There's not, there's arguments and there's biased perception. Whether that biased perception is coming from a judge or a jury, that's what it is, it's based upon somebody's experiences, right? So it's, in situations like this, it's very hard to like, you know, come up with hard, fast rules and determinations. So I know these like ambiguous nebulous terms of like, what is reasonable? I mean, it's really just the feel, it's a feel for the, that's why it's this whole totality of the circumstances thing. I mean, unfortunately, it's just, it's hard to...
I'm just curious with regards to the consideration there in that, that language, I understand the intent.
Yeah, I mean, they, from a practical application, they would, that's what I'm saying, not being a law enforcement officer, they would understand better based upon their day-to-day experience of, okay, how would I determine that, you know, a higher standard needs to be applied here? And again, I think, but in reality, just all of us kind of understand, right? Like, okay, you got home from work, it's 7:00, kids are playing across the street, they're making a lot of noise, you know, maybe a little bit annoying, but you're like, hey, that's acceptable. You know, it gets to be 9:00, the same kids are, you know, playing with lawn equipment, you're like, okay, that's not acceptable, you know? So it's, um, it's just a consideration. And think about this in the sense that like if it's dark, I mean, that's kind of how I feel about it, right? If it's dark out, you're like, okay, I would expect it to be a little bit quieter on the, on the streets or in the areas. But I apologize that I can't provide much of a...
Nah, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Um, I, I do think it's worthwhile perhaps as the council would come, maybe not at the moment, but before we leave tonight, that we come back to the hours and days that you've proposed.
Totally agree with you.
I like the hours and days in it.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with them, I just know that you were essentially, you just would like to...
Yeah, I just put them out there, yeah, exactly, I would like input.
My, my biggest, and my only experience with, with the noise ordinance was mainly due to with lawn companies starting at 6:30 in the morning and they need to start at 7:00 or 7:30.
There you go.
Evening hours for construction and stuff, but there, that, that those hours are appropriate as listed. Less, less concerned about, um, since they would probably fall within, within the time of day people are working anyways. I think that's all I really had to add for the, for time being, thank you.
Lauren?
Brett, thanks, I appreciate the effort that went into the ordinance. I did, uh, I spent some good time with it and I, I have some concerns that I wanted to, uh, address that I think it can help tweak it. Let me just share my concerns, I'll just sort of read through it as I thought through them, give you some ideas and see how, you know, not that you have to react to them now, but these were the concerns. When I read lines 204 to 205, if there's more noise in an area, the reported excess noise may be okay because it's already noisy. And I said, this may be a lower incentive to be quiet. And this could create an unequal application of law where residents in quieter areas are actually held to a stricter standard than those in noisier areas. One may violate the noise ordinance twice during the same 24 hour period and only receive warnings each time as long as one complies with the warnings. only receive warnings each time as long as one complies with the warnings. There's little incentive to comply day after day, as all you do is receive warnings. So consider the potential for chronic repeat offenders to exploit the loophole, undermining the ordinance's purpose of maintaining peace and quiet, twice a day, every day. The ordinance gives officers broad discretion, allowing them to assess the situation based on their judgment. So your factors in section twenty-two, thirty-four C are intended as a guide but not mandatory criteria that must be met for every decision. And I understand too, the idea that the, you know, the law is, is open to interpretation and argument, as you said. So the officer can choose factors which to consider and how much weight to give them, and even disregard some factors entirely. Is that fair?
They can.
Okay.
But again, they have to, just to clarify.
Okay. If they feel they're not relevant.
They have to articulate their reasons for it. So they do have to write down like.
In a response to the complaint, in the officer's notes section, you'd expect that to appear if you, if you ask for the public record?
Yeah, an issue in the warning, yes, it's going to be, they're going to write down their.
So that would appear in the public record, great. And I think that's a good thing, because that's a feedback that everyone can see and understand what the officer's determination is.
Yeah, and it's.
So that helps with transparency. So just consider, and you talked about bias, discretion can lead to bias, whether conscious or unconscious, where officers may apply the rules differently, and we don't want to lead to unequal treatment of residents. Now, often these laws, I imagine, Chief, and I've seen some of them, has procedures related to how you apply this. So that matters perhaps even more. He would call it training, or this is how it is set up. So this again is the concern over, you know, what's the balance between subjectiveness and, and the ability to say there's a little more objective or, you know, this is going to be part of what we want to do. There's, the, one of the bigger concerns is there's no redress for residents who challenge or appeal an officer's determination. If someone disagrees with an officer's decision, their options are very limited. So I, I would think there ought to be some sort of equitable, established appeals process within the ordinance to ensure fairness and transparency. And that applies whether you're a resident, a business owner, a guest, or whomever else, because it's challenging when you have a decision made, and then the old adage comes up, you can't fight City Hall, right? If there's no redress or other option, that's the determination, pound sand. It only really gives you one other option for the person who's really upset, and we really don't want to encourage other options that then involve the law, right? Lawyers and other, other folks. So, I was just thinking about this, I know you're trying to balance something that's not the same as, as speed limits, for instance, or parking rules, but we've got to strike a balance here, because imagine if you were, you were, you know, speed limits weren't posted and officers just decided, what is reasonable, right? Would you feel confident driving, knowing that what is acceptable for one driver might not be for another? And I get there's discretion on whether they write you a ticket or not, that's other evidence gathering, and Chief walked through that. So those are the, the concerns, especially the ones related to the redress, the, the ability to just get warning after warning?
Can I address them real quick?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Perfect. I agree with you on the warning after warning, that's something, like, if we wanted to add, you know, like, a number of times within a week, or a number of times within a X amount of days, so that it does, you know, prevent having some egregious, you know, consistent loophole violator, which is a legitimate concern? So, yeah, let's, let's open for discussion about that.
I walk by code enforcement issues every single day.
Right, right. Oh, yeah, yeah.
And they are, they are not mitigated, and the answer is, we can't handle the repeat offenders. Well, that's where the.
Right.
The majority of the unreasonable.
Right.
Well, people unable to work together for whatever reasons.
Yep.
And you'd want this to apply in a way that can help realign them back to being like, hey, if I push it further.
Right.
You know, it's like my child, there's a higher penalty when you repeat.
And so that's another reason that, you know, although maybe my personal, just because of thinking about being neighborly, I don't want to, you know, raise it to the level of like a misdemeanor, even though that's what's written here, but maybe we do want to, because it is the, the teeth that, you know, I mean, people will be hesitant to, to push the envelope and, you know, comply. On your other two, which I, I had a joint, the other two concerns, very valid, and I wrestle with that, consider it as far as it, you know, discretion and unequal treatment, you know, that's, that's unfortunately just a natural consequence of a lot of this, right? But, and the fact that there's no redress for appeal process, right? So I was initially considering, and I was going to include, that if a resident is dissatisfied with an officer's determination, that there be a process to where they could essentially require, they can escalate it to be like, all right, bring out the sound level meter. Bring out the sound level meter. But, and then that would be, you know, then you could kind of get like an objective test. The problem is, it just, yeah, it opens up kind of Pandora's box to a whole bunch of other issues. And so in the end, I was like, I default trust our officers to work this out with. Chief Connor wanted to speak on that.
So if we, if we do address this as a criminal offense, then there are, and I'm talking an extreme case, obviously, twenty, almost twenty-seven years I've been here, I've never arrested anybody.
Right.
On a noise ordinance. But if they, if there is, say, an arrest made, then there is a court system to address that. Similarly, if we treat this as an ordinance violation, and we send the information to the code board, then they get a violation letter, and after so many violations, then that's what the code board is for. We have code hearings all the time on violations of town code.
Yep.
So are you urging against changing the repeat violation section of this? Or would you suggest, like Lauren said, you know, twice a day, every day, for a month, that becomes a problem?
I'm not prepared to give a finite answer on that, I think that's something that we could definitely look at, I wouldn't want to be too restrictive, but at the same time, I understand, because we will get that, we will get, they're calling every five minutes or every other, you know?
Right, right.
And, and so just let us do our job, and, but we have to have some way to, to address that, and address the grievances and things like that too, so.
About five times in a week? Just throwing it out there, I mean, that would establish a violation.
Have to think about it. I mean, that basically allows somebody to annoy the neighbor every day except Saturday and Sunday.
Right, and then it's like, all right, enough's enough.
Yeah, we've dealt with, we've dealt with that before.
Yeah.
He moved out of town, though.
Yeah.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Chief, would the officers be using body cameras in this instance?
Every call we go on, we have body cameras on, yes, sir.
So if there's an dispute of, I didn't, you know, that didn't happen, you have, we would have evidence that it did or didn't happen.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and that's kind of the court's position too, that if it's not on camera, it didn't happen, that we cross over that line a long time ago with in-car cameras, and now we all wear body cams. In fact, my microphone got stuck just a minute ago to my, my body mic, my body camera mount, but yeah, it, it would be on video.
Okay.
And the other thing that you brought up, Brett, that we talked about, is I'd modified it in the tourist zone, right? This would apply to all zones, I don't know why you would have an exempt.
Oh, no, no, that was for the, a permit to have sound amplifying equipment.
Right, but anytime someone, would you exempt a zone so one person can have in a certain zone sound, amplified sound, without a permit? I did go to the MUNA code, you're correct, that our current stuff doesn't include the T-zone, neither does this. So the T-zone could have amplified sound without a permit?
Well, no, because, I mean, I would presume that that would be a noise disturbance, and that the amplifying equipment and the, and getting the permit is to expressly allow it. Do you see what I'm saying? So it's like you, if you want to use a sound amplifying equipment, which is, you know, like a loudspeaker, like something, you know, crazy like that.
However, sound is, well, sound is amplified.
Guitar amplification or whatever, right?
Right. Why would you exempt a zone?
So I'm not exempting a zone.
It's not listed.
The way it was init, it knows that it was, it's pretty much not permitted, except for getting a permit and using it in these. Again, I didn't have an opinion on it, I just brought over what our language on that sound amplifying equipment, brought over our language from our current.
So what, what zones would.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess, I agree with you.
Could have sound amplification without a permit. It's okay to have it and use it, and you can use it, and if you get a warning, you get a warning. Is there, are there zones that are allowed?
So what that would be is, it would normally be, right, fall under, is this, you know, a reasonable person, ordinary sensibilities, is this a noise disturbance? If somebody's using sound amplification equipment, like in residential areas, say they're playing like electric guitar in their house, right? The point of getting a permit in these other areas, it's almost like an exception, which that's why the exceptions say, if permitted by the town, so it's, these are saying, okay, you can't call us on a noise disturbance for having a permitted sound amplifying equipment, and you're allowed to get those in these, these zoning districts. Now, I agree with what your point is, is like, why couldn't you get a permit to do it in residential, you know, say for like a birthday party or something like that?
No, that's not the point, I'm, I'm sorry, but my point is, why would you give the ability to not have a permit, not require a permit if you wanted amplified sound in a zone? Why would you not include all zones? This zone.
That's what I'm, that's what I agree with you, I'm saying that I under.
You could add the T.
The way I view.
Are you adding the T-zone in there or not?
No, I would be. What I'm almost saying is that all zones could apply for getting the permit.
Great.
That's what my point.
I would like to see that, yep.
So we are on the same page.
Yep.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, that makes sense. So we would really just take out, say, on private property as opposed to in, you know, this district, in all zoning districts for special events as so declared by the town council. I would just have to look at what our special event, our code says on special events, and if it's restricted to specific areas.
Right, and, and the permit is not town council, it's the police chief and the town manager.
Right, right, absolutely, of course. We don't do the management day-to-day.
Clarification, you're having a block party.
Right.
You need to have a permit for sound amplification?
That's, I would, I would, I mean, I would think so, right?
I don't know, I'm asking, I don't, I don't have an answer for that, I'm just, just a question.
Sound amplification stuff, that's why I really copied over a lot of it, because I'm like, ugh.
I mean, typically now, we don't.
I just can't think of when we, when do we.
Well, you, you had the.
What do we use it for? Like, when do we bust out sound amplifications at?
Even, even just a Sonos, like, you drag out your Sonos, you know, at the block party?
Yeah.
That's technically amplification, right?
We basically use it on the special permits for a sound amplification, is for events on town property that's going to have amplified music. I mean, if you get into technically amplified music, so you're in a backyard, sitting in your pool playing music, do they have a permit for that? That's where you kind of.
Yeah, no, I want to tighten it up as far as what the definition of actual amplification equipment is, because it is a little bit broad, should be narrower to be like, you know.
Like non-personal use?
Yeah, exactly, and, you know, large, like bullhorn type stuff, or.
Right, right, large concert speakers.
Yeah, exactly.
But, yeah, just having your, your Sonos in the backyard, or your boombox if you're old enough for that.
Yeah. I mean, it's, as everybody can tell, this is one of those, like a lot of things, where it's really tough to find a balance, especially with trying to be reasonable with this, but then not get super technical and then box ourselves out of things, you know?
So if we want to move forward, Paul, do we, can we approve this pending?
Yeah, you can approve this on first reading with the changes that have been outlined. It'll, what will then happen is, it will be advertised for a public hearing, the business impact statement will be, will be posted for it, it'll come back next time for a formal public hearing and second reading and adoption, and you can make minor, non-material changes on second reading.
And as an example, if we change a time, just because it's a really simple thing, instead of nine fifty-nine to ten thirty-five, is that minor or is that significant?
My view, I, you know, I don't know of any case law on that, but in my view, that's, that is, that's non-material.
Okay. I'm not suggesting that by any means, just using it as an example.
So before.
I think we need to figure out tonight, because I, this would be a material change, when it gets to the penalty part, are we going code enforcement, are we going, you know, the courts? Yeah.
Either way.
Yeah.
I think what.
You think, I, we think.
I would recommend to you.
Yeah, please.
Allow either approach. And obviously, if it's, if it's code enforcement, you don't need a law enforcement officer to, to, you know, issue the notice. If it's court, you do.
Right. So.
But if you don't need a law enforcement officer to issue the notice, who, who has the capacity?
Code enforcement officer.
But that's basically one or two people. Molly had something to say.
Violation of codes is, with penalties, is a misdemeanor already.
I just want to make the comment, when you work with code enforcement, if you go the code enforcement route, you're not going to have someone go out and go, okay, on September first, you need to appear this date and time, here you go. They're not going to have anything tangible, you're going to come back to the office, and Monday morning, you're going to get with Victoria, and you're going to say, we need to take this person to the code board. She's going to call Paul, she's going to call Joe Colombo, she's going to get a hold of the board members, send out four texts, it is not a timely process.
Right, right.
And it, it is nothing happens quickly, so you're not going to hand the person who's violating any tangible anything. If the law enforcement officers decide to go the route of an arrest document, they call dispatch and they say, you will be in court, here is the date and the time. They have an immediate, I, I don't want to say like an immediate penalty, but there is an immediate consequence.
Much more timely.
Go the route.
Right.
With code enforcement, and they're getting stricter on how you serve those notices. If you have someone dodging you for code enforcement, it's not as simple as it was six months ago, didn't say that somebody served.
Yep.
Just throwing that out.
And, and half the time, code enforcement's like, oh, let's give them another chance.
Also a reminder, all police officers, if I are code, are code enforcement officers.
Right, right.
So it's not those one or two people, they are.
So if we were to allow it to be an either-or in the code, is that reasonable from a standpoint of implementing it?
That is actually the way your codes are now, generally.
Okay.
Violation, vi, under, under your, your code of ordinance, is violation of the code is a violation of municipal ordinance, which can be taken to court, or alternatively, it can be enforced through code enforcement.
And, and who makes that decision, Paul? Whose discretion to go which route if you offer two routes?
Well, historically, we, we have, we've not gone the court, the court route for, for code enforcement violations. That's just been, that's been, that's been our historic posture as long as I've, you know, been around here. And I suspect that probably one of the reasons is, is that just because you, you know, cite somebody, you know, you get to the question of whether or not the state attorney is going to prosecute the thing. You know, it's not like this is really high on their list of, they're worried about murderers and robbers and carjackings, stuff like that. And if they have a choice between prosecuting a noise violation or a carjacking, I suspect that what they'll do is prosecute the carjacking. There's only, there's only so many assistant state attorneys in so many cases that they can handle.
So you've just outlined a penalty that's unlikely to happen.
Well, not, not necessarily.
Well, but I've actually, I've talked to this, and I've talked to Chief, and I've, I've done my research too, I agree with your conclusion, that it's unlikely to go to court. And I've just heard from Molly that there's this very long lead time with code enforcement as well. So help me understand what's the most reasonable mechanism for the folks who aren't getting along, who may be repeat violators? Can you help me understand that?
Well, I think probably the mere fact that you're going to have a police officer showing up on the site would, would be a red flag to most people, that they need to straighten their act up. Now, you'll have a, you know, small number out there that are just smart alecks, that small number out there that are just smart alecks, uh, that think that they can, they can do whatever they want. And, uh, then I guess we get down to prosecutorial discretion at that point. You know, the officer, based on the totality of the circumstances, uh, can make a decision, uh, what they, what they wanna do.
But we're not quite getting the question, I apologize, let me ask it better. What if there are found to be repeat offenses by the individual? The prosecutorial discretion is there's a problem here. Do they go to code enforcement? That I just heard from Molly, a concern, and I also heard from you, and I do understand that the likelihood of our, uh, our, our system to prosecute it is low. I also heard a resistance to, if we do lose, that we pay the bills. So the idea is, which is it? So please, what-
There's no good answer.
Okay, thank you.
No good answer. And if you need proof of that, uh, you can, you can look at the situation with the, uh, with the Justice Department and their attempts to prosecute, uh, former President Trump. They've had great, it's always another continuance in court, and always another, uh, another hearing to be held, and always another appeal before something happens. And unfortunately, that's one of the problems with, with the, with the legal system. And when I say legal system, I'm referring not only to court, but I'm referring to code enforcement. The system is, the system is built, uh, on a process, uh, due process, if you will, where, um, you know, a great, a great number of rights are extended to people that have been accused or alleged to have, uh, you know, to have violated the law before the, uh, before, as they say, the fat lady can sing. So I'm sorry to be so vague, but-
No, I appreciate you getting down to true, what I'd call that sort of brass tacks, and, and just laying it, it out, because Brett is asking for that type of input, right? Do we do either or? But I'm just thinking in my mind with all this effort, right? Reasonable people will comply. The issue becomes a challenge a little more if some folks are unable to agree.
Yeah, the smart alecs of the world.
Well, I, I don't need to use a label, I'm just saying, for whatever reason, folks feel they're both correct, and it happens, right? Okay, thank you, Paul.
Listen to public comments maybe then.
Yeah, I was gonna make, I was gonna have a motion first, if we wanted to approve this, or if we wanted to nail down the details and then do the public comment. I mean, as far as the repeat offenders, I was just thinking, you know, you don't wanna have a, a cycle, right? You know, if it's three every, you can do it twice without a penalty every day of the month right now, according to this, you know? That's a problem. Yeah, um, and if you do it, you know, come up with something, I think there needs to be multiple layers. So, you know, you got the three in twenty-four hours, and then maybe you do four in two calendar days. Well, if you only stop there, then you have somebody every two calendar days pissing off their neighbor. So maybe it's four in two calendar days and five in a month. You know, something along those lines, that kinda captures, uh-
I'm fully on board with that idea, just trying to pinpoint the, the time periods.
Benchmark it with some other ordinances that may exist, either in our town or, or other towns, as-
Do it better.
Well, we do, we do, we'll benchmark it and make it better. As we all are just, we may set the bar wherever it is, and if, but if they get cited, it may not result in a timely, uh-
Say, what did you set it on, Mark, uh, two in four?
So right now, it's what?
Three in twenty-four hours, and then you said some others that were good.
Uh, what'd I say, four in two calendar days and five in a calendar month? Or rolling-
About like five in two weeks.
Yeah, that's fine.
If you're addressing a commercial, um, top, you know, commercial entertainment company, it's probably more realistic to have it, you know, five and within five days, or five or seven within seven days. So that they can't say, okay, we'll just not have this type of entertainment on Wednesday.
I think what we can do is we can put some language in, and then, uh, you all can massage it a little bit further at second reading.
Okay. So is there a motion before we hear public comment?
Uh, another consideration though is just like the, the times, um, of days that I suggested here.
I like the times and days.
And whether or not you all want any changes as far as commercial zones, should be something different than residential. Just putting it out there.
Yeah, I like it as it is personally.
You know, if we, if we find it to be offensive, the police can use their prosecutorial discretion.
Discretion.
They find the times to be, from the council to be ill-advised, so.
So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, um, pass the amendment, and I don't have the number in front of me, twenty twenty-four dash-
One zero?
Some zero.
Zero. Regarding to noise ordinance, um, looking to make modifications for, um-
Second reading.
Second reading, okay. I don't have to provide in motion any guys.
As, as amended.
As amended.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, public comment, oh-
Before we get to that, can we, uh, read into the record, uh, make part of the record, uh, the correspondence that the council has received?
Sure.
Uh, I'm not gonna actually read all these comments, they've been circulated to the council, and the council's had a chance to review them. But we have, uh, uh, two pieces of correspondence from Jim Seaton dated August eleventh and August twelfth. One from Carrie Floyd dated August twelfth. One from David Boyd dated August thirteenth. One from John Brady dated August thirteenth. One from Bob Lowry dated August thirteenth. One from Andrea and Paul Kowalski dated August thirteenth. One from Carla Rodiger dated August the thirteenth. One from Lori and Craig Cockrell dated August thirteenth. One from Steve and Margaret Shaver dated August fourteenth. One from Cynthia Bernstein dated August fourteenth. And we'll make those part of the record, and I thank the clerk for compiling all that.
All right, now we'll go, I have three cards here, and if there's anybody else, we'll, we'll get you guys after. So, uh, John Brady.
Good evening, uh, John Brady, three oh five ninth terrace. Um, I prepared these comments, I guess, a couple days ago, and some of it has already been addressed, but I'm just gonna roll with it, 'cause I've got them already prepared. So, uh, good evening. It is interesting that we are allowing a single resident to weigh in so heavily on a proposed ordinance, especially, especially since this resident seems to have a singular goal in mind. I've only been to BB's twice, I'm not a fan one way or the other, but it appears that this business is a dramatic improvement to what was there previously. The owner has clearly invested a great deal into improving this property. The other property owners of Indian Atlantic should take note of what he's doing. My concern is how, it appears the council is being heavily swayed by a vocal minority. The concern is how they will address any future issues. Will they rely on ordinance laws? Or they be influenced by the emotions ingrung with a small group of disgruntled citizens? It seems that we should have some more public input into this or any proposed ordinance change. There are several ways to accomplish this, and I've heard them tonight, so I'll just leave that part of my statement out. I guess we're gonna publish this, and we'll do all that, so. However, the current practice seems to be working fine. Not sure that any change is actually necessary. Here are some questions to consider. Have you all asked your, your own team about any issues as it relates to noise complaints? Have you asked the chief of police? We have tonight. Were the code, uh, code enforcement officer for their input? Is the town actually being bombarded by noise complaints? Is the police department gaining compliance under the current noise ordinance? Police show up, they ask to turn a noise down, are they gaining compliance? In my personal experience as a law enforcement officer, we gain compliance ninety-nine point nine percent of the time by contacting the person, alerting them of the noise complaint, and again, the vast majority of the time, people complied, complied, turned down, or silenced the offending noise. After serving on the code enforcement board here in Indian Atlantic for the last two years, we have had zero, none, absolutely no noise complaints to adjudicate. The council may wanna consider any unintended consequences of passing a noise ordinance that seems to be focused on a single perceived problem. The passing of this ordinance may have wider implications. Kids' birthday parties, barking dogs, lawn care equipment, in-home music lessons. Even the passing of that train two point five miles away. They all may violate a noise ordinance, what then? With all this said, ordinances like any regulation or law should be, should be reviewed periodically for a variety of reasons. After listening to a couple council meetings, there probably should be a review and potentially updating of some town ordinances. If they are found to be working as intended, perhaps a note should be added that the ordinance was reviewed, a date attached to indicate when the review was conducted. Finally, the council needs to address the question, once this specific ordinance is updated and BB's or any other ordinance violation is found to be complying, will they continue to entertain an extremely vocal minority with a singular goal? Thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, Carla.
Thank you. Carla Rodiger, six oh one North Miramar, Indian Atlantic, Florida. Um, so thank you for hearing me. Um, you know, we live together as neighbors, we work together, we treat others with respect. And I'm talking about excessive noise at five oh one North Miramar. I'm not disgruntled, I'm not a lone resident. BB is not in compliance with other numerous ordinances. They are not, I'm not talking about a singular, non-regular noise ordinance. This is a regular business playing music every day. This is not a birthday party, this is not kids playing, this is every day. So thank you Brett Miller for all your work during, um, on this noise ordinance. I just have a couple things I wanna talk about. The first thing is, um, thank you for including all the, uh, zones in this ordinance. Thank you for trying to fix the loopholes, so that way, we're not calling numerous times for a repeat offender. I hope the new language in the second reading, um, addresses all of this. In section two-two, uh, dash three-six B, it states that the noise has to be reduced to an acceptable level. I know you think an acceptable level is, and reasonable, I just feel like there needs to be more specific, because there's not enough to go on. I feel like if we're gonna have to call three times, that's really gonna bother the police officers, they won't be able to do, and if the other patrolling will be wasting our police officers' time trying to address this problem. So I look forward to the second reading, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jim.
Jim Seaton, six oh one North Miramar. There, there's lots of good positives in, in what's been done, uh, I compliment the work that's been done. I think the most important thing, uh, that's in this is that you're basically codifying what they're doing today. And I think that's important, because, uh, you know, it documents, uh, how they're working today. The, the concerns that I have and many of my neighbors is that it's a little too subjective. And what we'd like to see is some kind of a, maybe you might call it appeal, I'll call it a backstop, where, okay, at some point, two officers won't agree on exactly what it is, but if you put in, you know, if you can hear it at two hundred feet, it's definitely a disturbance. And there is nothing easier in this world to measure than two hundred feet. It's sixty-six giant steps, or if you're a golfer, you can buy a meter for thirty-nine ninety-nine and measure it to within a foot. So distance is easy to measure, and so putting, using the plainly audible with a distance criteria in addition to what's been done, I think provides that appeal, provides that backstop. So there's basically no question, if you can hear it at two hundred feet, you know, whether the police officer says, well, it's not that bad of music, or, you know, I, I think I can have a conversation, if it's plainly audible at a certain distance, it's easy to measure, and it's a great backstop to, to what's, uh, I think, a, a good ordinance. I, I like, um, Lauren came up with the idea of, uh, you know, what, what if we had speed limits that said slow, medium, and fast? I mean, how does, how does an officer, um, you know, subjectively decide what that is? The reason we have firm numbers there is because we need that. Uh, and, and not only for the police officers, but as a, as a resident, we need to know, you know, at what distance can we make noise, what speed can we go down the road? So, um, uh, that, that would be my input on, on making that change, putting in that piece of the county where there's a distance, and, um, using that as sort of the, the measurement of last appeal to be sure that you're, know whether there's a disturbance or not. And, and the, the last thing I would say is that I, I'm kinda baffled that you could, you know, that the current wording is that you could, um, violate this ordinance three times in a day and keep doing it. You've talked about some ways to narrow that down, but I, you know, if I was burning trash, I can, I can do it three times today and three times tomorrow, and seven times in the month? I mean, I think, I think that repeat violation needs to be tightened up quite a bit. You know, five times in a month, maybe that's not too unreasonable, but even to, to me, that seems like someone's taking advantage of the system. So, that'd be my input.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, anyone else?
Stephen Bond, four sixty Watson Drive, uh, first, Councilman Miller. Phenomenal job, I wanna say that, uh, I followed this for probably a few weeks, never said anything, and didn't mention anything, and I was just curious about it. And, um, and then actually, your comments tonight and your changes, uh, made me rethink entirely the whole situation. So I actually wanna commend you for that, because it was, um, an interesting perspective. The person that lives behind me is actually Brevard County. And so this ordinance really doesn't do anything to me, I have great neighbors, we all communicate, we have issues, it's, it's how you're supposed to act, really. However, the individual behind us, uh, is not like that, and so you talk about reasonable people. And so the interesting thing about the Brevard County, um, sound ordinance and the distance and everything associated with it is, uh, time also matters. Our neighbor likes to put their really loud speaker on a ladder on the fence and facing our three of us. And so it could be so, you can hear the bass inside the house. And so in Indian Atlantic, a lot of us, from here to that wall, is my neighbor's fence in my house. And so, you know, the distance does not matter. Two hundred feet could be ten neighbors down the street. So, you know, it just kinda depends. So, you know, the distance thing, I wanna thank you for that and that thoughtful nature, because that's a really good sign of looking outside the box, thinking outside the box, what's a way to appropriately, um, address all of us. So, uh, I just kinda wanted to mention that, uh, Brevard County actually wouldn't even do anything until ten o'clock at night. And even then, if the person didn't answer the door, they still wouldn't do anything. So there are flaws in their own policy there, so I just wanted to add that to, just to say, hey, here's an example of how Brevard County policy does not really do anything, so, thank you for that.
Thank you. Real quick question for my own clarification, I don't know if it's a chief or a Brett question, but in that instance, neighbor puts a speaker up at noon and plays it unreasonably loud, that this would apply even though it is before nine or ten, depending on the day, is that correct?
So even with there being a higher standard and threshold, I'd like to think that everyone in this room would believe that it is unreasonable for your neighbor to intentionally project, I mean, that's egregious, he's obviously doing it to be a jerk, right?
Right, and, and under the Brevard, like, like Steve mentioned, it's not enforceable, because it's before ten PM.
Right.
Where this one-
There's a lot of flaws in Brevard counties.
Right, okay, I was just, uh, just-
But, but it also depends, way it's written, on the current ambient noise as well. So if there's other people playing stuff, it actually can allow the louder music to exist, even if you're pointing it that way, because-
No, again-
You're saying in there that-
It's the totality of the circumstances, so just be a reasonable person. Show up to the scene and be like, okay, clearly this person is doing something intentional, that is not reasonable. Doesn't matter, forget that whole, it doesn't matter if there's a bunch of other noise, it doesn't matter how, like, that is an unreasonable situation. That's what, like, really can't emphasize the core enough. We all know how to live and be neighbors and go along to get along, right?
Except Steve's neighbor.
Yeah, exactly, well, but he's being a jerk on purpose, right? So it's just about the feel of the situation. Everyone knows what is generally deemed acceptable and what's not. I, I think it's these very fringe situations, uh, I mean, John mentioned it with his experience as a law enforcement officer, he says ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, people come in and comply, so. I think we're worried, which rightfully so, we should be, but I think we're worried about a very minority of fringe situations that it'll be hard to, hard to call a ball or a strike, and I don't-
All right, um-
Can I, can I make a comment about your comment, the, the Brevard County ordinance?
Oh, yeah.
The great thing about the Brevard County ordinance is it does have a daytime distance and a nighttime distance. So it's enforceable twenty-four hours, it's just the criteria are different. And their distance for the plainly audible is, the distance is the difference. It's, uh, their sound meters in the rest of the ordinance is different at day and night. So they, they do have enforceable ordinances-
Right, but-
Different day and night.
I think, right, I understand that, I think the difference is- Well, yeah, they don't enforce it, but, um- Well, yeah, they don't enforce it, but if you're inside that radius, they don't, it's not enforceable, where with, with, with what we have written by Brett, anything, like, from here to there, you know, is enforceable, if it's...
Under the circumstances, unreasonable.
Right.
And I want to kinda clarify something for you, Mr. Seaton. So, you made a comment about, you know, the distance requirement, and hey, if it's plainly audible at 200 feet, it's a violation. That's, that's actually not correct. Just because you can hear it at 200 feet, if you have those distance requirements, does not mean it's a noise disturbance. You have to look at the definition of noise disturbance, and that's where it comes back to, out of the totality of the circumstances, would a reasonable person of ordinary sensibilities find it to be, you know, annoying, you know, detrimental to their quality of life, mental health, whatever it may be? So, even if you're at the 200 feet, and it's plainly audible, it doesn't mean that it's an automatic violation. You still have to account for the situation at hand. So, just because you can hear it at 200 feet, wouldn't mean that...
If I may also, so, we're really good at writing reports and articulating things, so, we have, I mean, there's nothing to stop us from recurring issues. So, we start to build this, okay, we have this problem here, clearly, we identify it. Sometimes I'll go out and I'll talk to the folks, hey, let's, you know, let's get along to get, let's live together. But if they don't, and it continues to be a problem, then we start documenting this. And we get, and Mr. Bond is really good about sending me videos of speeding cars going down the street and running stop signs. So, we get that type of evidence, right? And then we go over, we have body cams, like we mentioned before, we start talking to the offending party, we start building this up, building it up. Once we get a lot of complaints, and we get a lot of evidence together, there's nothing to preclude us from filing with the state attorney's office. We file it with them, to have them take a look, and sometimes they will pick it up. Because it's a quality of life issue, right? We're trying to establish some tranquility here, that everybody gets along, but if we document it enough, we've got enough evidence, then they, they will sometimes pick it up. And we've had that happen. Not in this instant case, but...
Right. So, any other public comment regarding this? All right, moving on, we'll, we'll vote, so, all those in favor of approving 2024-10 with the changes as stated by Doug? Say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, passes. All right. Anybody else need a bio break? Unfinished business? We have none.
Watch the cord, Mike.
New business. Hopefully, some of these will go quickly. All right, this is my item, item number one, discuss the Gopher Tortoises in 100 Block Watson Drive. This came up, there were, everybody knows about the Gopher Tortoises there at the triangle, and there were residents on social media that were expressing concerns, and they were calling for speed bumps. And for the record, Mike, we don't, as council, have the authority to do that, is that correct?
That is correct. It's supposed to come from a study, and there's supposed to be a, a kind of an interesting area, because there's only on Wayne are there houses, on Watson, there isn't there. And essentially, these are property anyway, because we don't own that triangle area, that's actually FPNL.
Oh, so the tria, I know, obviously, there's the substation, but the triangle is not ours?
It's not ours either.
Okay. So, if we wanted to put in speed bumps, it has to be initiated by the residents that live there?
Correct.
And it requires 75% approval, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Of the owners, not the, like rentals and stuff.
Okay.
Like FPNL would be the owner that who, that beats up to that, so you'd have to get through FPNL on the Watson side, you'd meet a commercial property, and you have to have, I think it's the president or vice president of our policy sign it. Yeah.
Are there, I forget, and I've gone by the intersection recently, is, are there currently signs that say, you know, slowdown?
I think there are, right?
Yeah, there's...
I know there were, I just don't know if they get put back up after all the construction with the new substation.
Yeah. There's signs up there.
There's no slow speed signs.
Watch out for tortoise.
Yeah.
Watch out for tortoise.
I guess one was run over recently.
Yeah.
All right, so moving, to move forward, someone, maybe me, just needs to reach out to the people that were voicing concern, is that correct?
Yes.
You guys have anything to say on that? Item number one, done. All right.
Go for an elevated crosswalk.
Yeah, 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 we'll put in elevated crosswalk, people love them.
Tunnels, we'll put in tunnels.
Wow.
You did what?
Tunnels under the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, while it may be mundane, do you want to open for public discussion, since the item came before us?
Yeah, we can do that, public comment?
I doubt there would be, but...
All right, good job. Agreement, item number two, agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, so this is the contract, is that right?
Yeah. So, every year, we do like salaries and stuff, but this is a three-year agreement, and we're up to this year. So, basically, there's only a few changes. We added the term, as I explained earlier during the budget workshop, that, we broke it down to have a fire lieutenant's positions now, not just a fire captain. That's the first change in Article 2. And then, when you get to the salary, we raised salaries by 4% COLA, and $1,500 across the board raise for all union members. And then, we broke apart, in section 8 right now, and then we broke apart, took out, based upon everything, like, we were paying, if they were a solo EMT, but not as a captain, they got $1,000. They said that wasn't necessary, we took that out. We don't have anybody collecting it currently, anyway. And then adding the $7,000 for being a solo paramedic, as an incentive pay, because we were doing $5,000 before, which is part of the salaries, we broke that apart, and it would raise a thousand. Next year, FY '26, to go to 8,000, and 27,000 to 9,000, as I said, that's kinda where everybody's at. And we're below, and depending what they do in a couple of years, we're, we're below now, everybody, almost. And then, the other, other thing, looks at a fire lieutenant, if you go to holidays, just a technical cleanup, they've been getting it since we, the council approved, Martin Luther Hang Day, and President's Day, we just added it to the contract, so it met the language, as we're doing a full contract, since it was approved by council.
All right.
They've already voted and ratified it on their half.
Chief, you're, you're good with the contract, I guess?
Yep.
Just, I was, had nothing to do with this, how are we, how are our firefighters, how's the pay compared to, say, like, surrounding area?
I'd say we're probably on the bottom end of the county, central floor, most likely. You know, Mike's trying to get us up there, so we're at least committed and trying to pull some money out, but I think for the most part, our paramedic incentive is probably on the bottom level. The county was currently a little bit below us, they're gonna go past us, I think, with their new contract, so...
Right.
Everyone's negotiating right now, so, in October, we'll probably settle more towards the bottom of everybody, I think, as far as that, once everybody gets their new contract in place.
Mine as a paramedic, there are salary, right now, we're above several agencies. I know Palm Bay and Melbourne City, but like the county and other, in, you know, Cocoa and stuff, and we're, so we're up there on the salary, that's why we're trying to work on the incentive.
Stu, you got anything?
Yeah, I, just to reiterate, I spoke with the manager of Rockledge Monday, Monday evening, and she mentioned that they have two fire contracts going on right now, negotiations, plus several more. So, where it all winds up, who knows?
Doug?
No additional comments.
Lauren?
It was nice, I had a back and forth with, with Mike, and one thing you may want to include next time, which he gave me, which was helpful, was exactly what you brought up, Mr. Mayor, which is where are we? And he gave the numbers, he gave a range of things for pay current, what the incentives were, and it was very nice to be able to see where we ranked, so that we could, I could look at it and go, okay, are we in the range for both recruiting, retention, et cetera? So, that'd be really helpful context, rather than having to bring it up here as much, or ask you ad hoc, but I appreciate it. Both Chief and Mike were the ones who negotiated it, and he also outlined what is, their initial offerings were, which I was interested in, and where they got to, which helped me understand how they approached negotiation, which was good. Again, they're trying to look out for the town's taxpayer money, and also the other things to satisfy as well. So, I don't have any other questions, I appreciate the back and forth, Mike.
Brett? All right. Is there a motion before public comment?
I'll move to approve item E2, the agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, as written with no changes.
One second.
All right. Any public comment? All right, all in favor of approving the agreement with firefighters? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed. Unanimous, all right. Item number three, discuss number of signs on Fifth Avenue, that is also my item, again, social media, I spend apparently too much time on social media.
Want more signs?
You're paying attention, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Right, right.
You're watching.
Well, the upside is, I have a lot of free time. Yeah, so, I don't think there's anything we can do, other than ask FDOT, but I wanted to hear what everybody's thoughts was on the number of signs, traffic signs, not business signs, you know, we have crosswalk, we have speed limit, we have bike lane, we have this, that, and the other, all kinds of signs, some of them block the other signs. You know, they are all pertinent information, but they seem excessive and detracts from the visual appeal of Fifth Avenue, right? We want to kinda clean it up a little bit. So, I wanted to hear what you guys thought. I think our only option, if we wanted to do anything, was send a firm letter to FDOT, which doesn't guarantee anything. Thoughts?
Is there, do we under, have we done an inventory of the signs, and who owns the signs, and are there any signs that we, we could have...
I believe the number is 105 signs, according to a few people. So...
Of non-business signs?
Yeah.
105 of non-business signs?
There's 105 street signs.
I'm just curious, are those 105, or all of them like FDOT, or, you know, or some other thing, that they're not ours, right?
None of them are ours.
We don't have purview to remove any of them without asking permission.
Correct.
Right, there's a couple scat signs, there's speed limit signs, there's the crosswalk, there's the bike lane, then there's the other bike lane, then the other bike lane, and then the other speed limit, and...
I think in general, yeah, it would be nice to maybe map them, map it out, and, and to, rather than ad hoc, just ask, or, and just ask, hey, can we reduce the number of signs? Be like, okay, we have 10 speed limit signs along Fifth Avenue, from here to here, there's here, 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 can we remove these three? And can we remove these two of this sign, and these three of that sign? So, we can be prescriptive, as opposed to just, mother may I, because I think, mother may I, the easiest answer to that is...
Right. It's actually a good idea. I like it. I have, I've done a little bit of research, funny enough, there's not any research here in the US, but Australia apparently has a lot of signs. Who knew? But there's, there's, there's studies on like sign clutter, and how they actually detract from safety.
Oh, of course.
You know?
Definitely do.
So, but, like I said, they're all pertinent.
This is FDOT in a nutshell, I mean...
Right, right, right.
Do the complete opposite of what makes reasonable sense.
Yeah. Lauren?
So, being a proponent of home rule, I think we should stand up for what we think the standard ought to be, and you make the strongest argument you can. And I get that FDOT is not a, a nice stakeholder, and has not worked very hand-in-hand with us, is what I've heard, and, and I think that I'm saying that from a non-emotional space, just understanding. But that doesn't mean you go and abdicate doing the right thing. The essence of home rule is, I, I would ask, you know, my colleagues, and those that have opinions, what should it look like? I think the aesthetics are challenging. It is very cluttered. I, I agree with that. It doesn't feel quaint, it doesn't feel relaxed, it doesn't feel beachy. I love getting on the residential street, that feels a little more like what I would, you know, my hometown. So, it's one thing to complain, but I think that if we're interested, we complain effectively, and we'd make some recommendations, these are the types of signs or distances we think that should either be removed or altered. And, again, Mike can put it out there, and, and we may not have a lot of hope, but, you know, it's the old Gretzky, right? You miss 100% of the shots you don't take. So, if it's important of our time, if our residents care enough about it, let's set a standard, and write down our most powerful arguments, and push FDOT as nicely and professionally as possible, and then hope you shoot for a sympathetic ear, or an in with some stakeholder who recognizes this, because I doubt we're the first to complain. So, I'm, I'm advocating, I'm in if there needs to be some effort of the council, and, but we should decide what it is, because, again, you don't just say there's too much sign clutter, I think we've got to be specific, because they're gonna get down very quickly to, great, what are you saying you want changed? Thank you.
On a side note, apparently, it's a slow day in Brevard County for news, because I did an interview today about signs on Fifth Avenue on Fox 35. She thought it was worthy of a story, for some reason.
Should've told them about the noise ordinance.
She asked about it.
Yeah, you want to see some action?
She asked about that, too.
Or the surf slide.
Brett, you have any comments?
I agree with the comments thus far, particularly having a specific recommendation. I think we start out, you know, the letter with, in the pursuit of safety, you've created an unsafe situation. Because it literally is to the, like, when you cross Riverside on Fifth Ave, and you see the plethora, it's like, nah, I'm just going normal. Like, there's too many to read? Like, it's ridiculous. Yeah, it really is.
Paul?
I think you all are dwelling on, on a good strategy, number one, identifying the signs that you want to have removed, and identifying on sign clutter creates an unsafe situation. A lot of the new signs that have gone up are pedestrian-oriented, and the reason for that is that DOT is fighting a terrible battle. They've got this program called Vision Zero, which is in effect around the state, where they're trying to reduce pedestrian catastrophe and death. And the reason is, is because when it comes to pedestrian death, Florida is, ta-da, number one in the, in the nation.
I think Brevard County's number one in Florida.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And so, they're gonna get a letter saying, oh, we want all these signs removed, and they're gonna say, you know, what are we to do? On the one hand, we're trying to stop people from getting run over and killed, and on the other hand, we've got these people down in the Atlantic yelling that there's too many signs. So, I think your strategy is a really good one. You're trying to argue towards safety, and you are identifying certain types of signs that you feel can be removed, which probably aren't the safety signs.
And I would maybe amend, or add to that, the fact that statistics in terms of the number of pedestrians being struck, injured, or killed on Fifth Avenue in the past 20 years, which I believe the latter category fatalities is zero, so...
I think we should combine it with, and I was gonna bring this up separately, we need to, personally, I would like to make a request that they lower the speed limit again. I think it was ridiculous what they did, it was like a spoiled child, you know, didn't get their way, so...
I think we did make that request, right?
It was, I think we should include it in the sign aspect, though, right? I mean, if you, I mean, that's about the safety, right? Lower the speed limit, take away the signs, you, you know...
They, they made that argument, right? They made that argument here, and then the argument was, without the traffic calming devices, we want, we're raising it to 35, and yet, the whole thing was...
That was exactly it.
It was insulting.
They're saying, if you don't want to eat speed bumps in a half a mile, then we're gonna raise the limit. Kind of stupidest response I ever heard.
Right.
But I think the other thing we can do, they are pushing Vision Zero, which I totally agree with, I think we go, get with the TPO, and they have a person who is assigned Vision Zero, invite her to come visit, and to take her for a tour of the signs. And then, ask for recommendations.
Actually do a site visit of the location, that they're gonna do a project? DOT would nev, DOT would never...
No, no.
Oh, okay, okay, maybe they'll be reasonable.
No, the TPO.
Well, they can give us some insight, maybe they won't have to...
I think that's a good suggestion, Stu, because they're also, so this person also spends time negotiating a bit with FDOT?
And the communities, she's worked with, I know the chief.
Sort of a liaison, so that would allow us another effective negotiator, if she or he sides with what our observations are, that puts another person in our corner. Is that what you're saying?
It puts a neutral person, but an educated, but educated person.
And TPO stands for?
Transportation Planning Organization. And Paul happens to be the attorney for that organization. So you've done that a lot more years than I have. What's your thoughts?
Yeah, absolutely. I think the more people you get on board, the better.
Good suggestions, Stu.
Chief, do you have anything on that?
I would submit that Tesla had made a lot of money about signs, but so. I agree with that, with the deputy mayor. She's really good about it. In fact, she's coming down this way soon. We're going to be doing an e-bike safety campaign. So we just had a Vision Zero meeting on that. But yeah, I agree with that. I think it's a good idea.
So how do we move from here?
You could possibly even get at the next TPO meeting, get them to submit a letter in support of our concerns.
We're going to do it before, after an invitation to come view?
After.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I think if I task our public works director, too, with doing a survey and the types of signs out there, that where we have the physical, so somebody's not here coming out, like I write a letter to the secretary of the district and stuff, he's not going to come out here. He'll send somebody else. But he can, if they see his pictures of the sign clutter and stuff, I think I'll task him with that and then also work with the TPO. And we can kind of move forward, decide, maybe bring back the council in September.
Okay.
Where we're at.
Our next Vision Zero quarterly meeting is next Tuesday. Just a while, up in Rockland.
All right. All right, so that's how we're moving forward then, right?
Is this a, Mr. Mayor says it's a consensus choice here? Or is there a motion we'd like?
Consensus is good? There it is.
Yes, sir.
Public comment? All right. All right, so discuss possible conflict between town code 20, oh, 20-2, peddlers and solicitors in the Florida state statute. Stu?
This actually came from watching television. There's a problem in Orlando and other places where you have your door-to-door solicitations.
People live outside your solar for your roof?
Yeah, solar or, exactly. Or AT&amp;T's notorious. It's not, they're not employees of AT&amp;T. They represent themselves. And you don't exactly get what you think you're getting. Today, I think we had, you know, one of the turf companies pop up. We have an ordinance. Nobody can force it, because it's really not that enforceable. The state has a statute. I don't know it's enforced either. But do we need both? Is my question. Which one can we actually use? State statute, state statute. Again, I don't think anybody's going to prosecute for it.
Let me give you some history, because I'm kind of familiar with this. The, our ordinance goes back in time, back to 1990s, when we had a lot of door-to-door stuff going on. Residents were in uproar about it. We went and researched the issue. We found out that low and behold, under state statutes, the clerk of court is responsible for issuing a permit to anybody that's going to go out and do door-to-door solicitation. So I can't remember who the clerk was at the time, whether it was Ray Winstead or Sandy Crawford. And for those of you that lived here any amount of time, you'll know I'm talking about ancient history. I mean, this is before Scott Ellis. And I called to the clerk's office and nobody knew anything about this permit procedure at all. So was it being enforced? I seriously doubt it. In the meantime, here in Indy Atlantic, they're saying, do something. So the council did. The council put in to affect the solicitation ordinance that we have. Now, the big difference between the state statute and our ordinance is that our ordinance is probably not as complete in its regulation as the state statute is. But interestingly, the state statute only relates to door-to-door sales for items that cost $25 or more. The big problem back in the 90s that people were complaining about were people running around selling chocolates and magazines. And neither of which, in those days, in $19.90, amounted to anything near or approaching $25, $25. So as a result, you had a bunch of people that weren't registered running around selling stuff and bothering people at their door. And that's what caused the ordinance. So do you need two ordinances? Well, I, you know, that's a question of whether or not you think you need some sort of level of enforcement. And apparently you do if the items that are being vended are under $25. Because if they're not over $25, then the clerk's office has no jurisdiction.
Does it, doesn't?
Doesn't.
Over 25?
Over 25, they do. Under 25, they don't.
I think the more concern is with the, as I say, are the AT&amp;T represent, those who represent themselves as being with the company. They aren't employees.
Misrepresent.
Misrepresent. The same with solar, where they misrepresent as being from FPL. You know, the turf greens and those, they probably are with the company. But that's just irritating. It's not.
So what does our code say? I honestly didn't read it.
Our code basically applies to door-to-door sales regardless of the cost of the item. That's probably the key difference. And it goes on to state, this is based on some case law from around the country, that, you know, if somebody posts a no soliciting sign out in their front yard, then the vendor, the vendor should not be going. Whether they've got a permit or don't have a permit, if there's a no soliciting sign, stay away.
Can we institute a permit requirement with a fee?
It's there. It's already there.
It's already there.
So Stu may ask?
It's not as broad as the state statutory requirements, but it's there.
What problem are you seeking to solve with this particular one?
Taking advantage of people. Okay. A, it's annoying, but B, it's a total misrepresentation.
Okay, so do you believe the ordinance is improper or the enforcement is not as vigorous? I'm trying to get it, because I'm hearing Paul say that we have a more restrictive ordinance that covers what we need.
Well, I think you have more. You want the police to be able to say to somebody, hey, stop it. Because once they see somebody with a car and a badge, they're going to stop it. And if they don't, they might be visited again.
So is it an enforcement issue or an ordinance issue?
Well, the question is, do we need both? We have the tools, but do we need both tools in which, and then what do you use? Which tool supersedes the other?
So you've got two different issues. One is you want better enforcement. And the other thing is you're looking at state law versus our ordinance. Is that correct?
State law, I think, came into effect in 2023, as I remember. I mean, the current one, I think, was 2023.
I think it was in effect back in the 90s.
Okay.
But Molly, Molly, did you state, and I know you're passing out information. Thank you kindly. You said the 2023 state law passed is more restrictive than our town ordinance. Am I misunderstanding?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, so there's new law that you're asking us to look at, Stu, to compare to our town ordinance?
It's more restricted in like getting solicitors permits and what they request and the information that they ask for.
You don't want people, you know, giving others to, oh, get solar, it's free. You know, they forget, tell you, it's a PACE program. There's nothing free about it.
So from a council standpoint, do we need to take action? Or we just need to ask the town manager?
That's kind of the question I'm asking, we're all asking, you know?
Do we have the tools or do we need to change?
Well, I can ask the question then, if you want. Mike and Chief, what's your priority level and experience addressing the concerns Stu is raising?
So I think we can leave it the way it is. The, I like to have them both on the books. Well, we use Florida statute to enforce this, because there's a lot of things. And like you said, Deputy Mayor, when we show up, we kind of harass them back a little bit. I mean, not only is it harassed, but we stay on top of them, because we do get a lot of calls. But they have to go through the permitting process if it's $25 or more. They have to carry a laminated permit with them. They have to show government-issued ID upon request. They have to leave a business card or a receipt or a three-day right of rescission, saying that the person has a, if they've already signed something, that person has three days to cancel that. And that never happens. So just tell them, you're in violation of Florida statute. And I just put an email out not too long ago, reiterating all this, so the officers have it. So, I mean, we do cite Florida statute and we get compliance with that.
I think they hit the south side, because somebody on, I think, Orlando or Tampa was complaining.
Yeah, so we're.
They get it like all the time.
We're good with Melbourne Beach Police Department. If they get dropped off into Melbourne Beach's jurisdiction, they'll message us and vice versa. So we go proactive down in that. We will look for that white van that dumps off, you know, five or six of them at a time. Because they're staying at a local hotel. They're not even from this area, you know? So we stay on top of it. Once we start getting one or two calls, that's our priority. That's our mission for a little while.
Okay.
I think with the town ordinance, it also addresses, like, you can actually post a non-solicitor sign.
Oh, they don't care.
Yeah, they don't always.
I know, but that gives us more enforcement power.
It does. The fire department used to be.
Used to sell them.
Used to sell them. The Volleys did for, I don't even know how much they were, but.
No, they sold them for money.
Yeah. And then you put them up there. And so that gave us a little bit more on the ordinance side for the bite, where we could say, this house is posted with no soliciting. You know, you can be actually trespassing now here, so.
I guess I just want to make sure residents know. That we're enforcing it. If residents have a problem, that they have a listening ear at the police department and that the police department has a way to enforce it.
It's changed from the day to the old photo brush salesman.
Maybe put a note in the police beat for the next quarterly newsletter.
Yeah, it's like the ones that represent themselves from AT&amp;T. They'll quote you a price. Well, the price you'll never see. Now you try to get out of the contract with AT&amp;T. Oh, you signed a contract right here.
Public comment?
I would have assumed the motivation in the 90s was due to Amway. Trying to 642 you.
All right, let's see.
Publishers Clearinghouse, I think, was a big, was a big one.
A lot of them. Item five, discuss approved town manager's evaluation form.
So, I was going to say, my only comment was when the comment was made last year, my recollection of the discussion was, the evaluation form itself, I don't have an issue with. Perhaps there's a better format out there. But what I think we discussed was seeking if we could get what we call mice company 360-degree feedback on your performance from maybe the department heads, just to help us, right? Because we see you in this environment. But what we try to do, at least in my place of employment, is you try to get, you know, superior peer and a subordinate, kind of, you know, up and down and across, so to speak. We don't necessarily have to do anything extravagant and it all be confidential and yada, yada, yada. But that was at least my recollection of the request.
I thought they were looking at other forms. I have no problem with the form and nothing could be confidential or government.
Well, yeah, given current and recent, your recent experience, yeah, understood.
So, yeah. I mean, I'll take guidance and go. It's that time of year or next month, my evaluation should be done before the end of the year.
Questions, comments?
I don't see a reason to change, I don't see a reason to change the form or change the method. I do think we may want to consider setting up reasonable goals and measuring against them. And that's not very hard to do. You know, things like, you know, hold the mileage rate below the rollback rate. I'm not suggesting doing that. I'm just using it as an example. You know, measuring the, you know, improving the road structure, communications with other departments or other, I'm sorry, other agencies. Things like that, you know, they're measurable.
Banning pickleball to Orlando Park.
Could be. No, but seriously, I don't, I don't see this as a complaint process. I just see it as a, if we can improve it, great. But I don't see anything wrong with it now.
So we, is it, we need to approve it, right?
You don't have to approve it, not change anything. What I can do is, I mean, it's going to be kind of hard to get goals, to meet goals that are there, is put out the evaluation form, but.
Oh, I wouldn't do it now. I'd start it for.
Like October 1st or something, start goals.
Typically, for, in my experience, in my limited experience, but goals, you typically set those at the beginning of the year, going into the year, not at the end of the cycle, but at the beginning of a new cycle.
Correct.
You align it with budget and financials and schedule and human resources type functions.
You know, you can, there's lots of things we could set it on. Lots of good suggestions in this, in the other manager forms. But I think ours is fine from a form standpoint. Just do we want to change the process?
Yeah. It was actually designed by Councilman Goldfarb when he was a council member, because the other forms weren't.
They were confusing.
So how about this? I come back in October, at the October, I'll send you all like an email before that. Hey, come up with some goals and we can discuss them at the October meeting and come to consensus of what the goals would be.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
I have something to say on this one, if you don't mind. And I'm just going to read it, because I thought about this one. So the town manager position is essentially the CEO of the town and everything flows from his leadership. And given the critical nature of this role, I believe a thoughtful evaluation, much like a 360, would be helpful, both for Mike to get really good feedback that he finds valuable to continue to, you know, improve and align with what we do with our comp plan. I'm concerned the council, we haven't aligned, and Stu's brought a little of it, which is good. We haven't aligned our own objectives or goals for the evaluation. So I liked the fact there was other information in the packet, but I didn't spend time on it, because without consensus on the goals, I wrote down, I said, any effort could easily be dismissed or lead to wasted time on an outcome that doesn't strengthen whatever we want for the evaluation process. So if tonight was just sort of the idea of, here's some options, we can throw them out. If it's just a matter of the council saying we're going to have just a few more goals, then we should do a really good job of goal setting if we want to have a more comprehensive review. And part of me wanted to ask Mike, well, Mike, and we did talk about this with the last review. I spent some time. I know I took a little longer on it. But you gave me feedback, the type of feedback was valuable for what you wanted compared to this form. And while Councilmember Goldfarb did a really good job on it, was sort of still, was it adequate? Hey, Mike, was this really something that helps you step up? And are we getting a really good view? And a 360 is, it takes time, but it does help you really understand how other leaders or other areas of improvement can be uncovered. So part of it, I wondered what Mike really wanted, right? And I would happily have that discussion. We all could have that discussion, whether it's publicly or individually. But I didn't really know what the council wanted, so I didn't spend a lot of time, because there's some really good options. But it's the most important position. He is the CEO. He is the leader. He controls the budget, the people, the attitude, the priorities of the town. So I think it's worthy to at least understand our objectives. And I'm not telling you what they should be. But if we don't have objectives, how can I show up and give you my best input?
Well, it's kind of like the bald when reading years past. If you don't have objectives and measurements, how do you know when you got there? The answer is you don't. So that's, again, I think we're all saying the same thing. Best to do in private, not as a group, grow. And come to, you know, see if.
So are we, Stu, are you suggesting we come back after some thoughtful discussions for next time? I'm happy to go in and then suggest some things. Will that be aligned with putting some suggestions out? Is that what we're doing? Or are we just going to say, and I want to respect, because some of us, you know, if it's too long, didn't read, filled out, I want to just do it. Let's not put a, don't ask me to put a lot of effort into it.
We're talking about like next year's evaluation.
We're talking next year, yeah.
Okay.
I think we ask, we talk to Mike and see what Mike wants to do. To be honest, if we all don't agree with it, we do another cycle. We can do this.
Well, I would put some, if we're going to ask Mike to set objectives, I think we ought to at least identify what areas we would like to see objectives in. You know, there will be one that's fiscal, one that's.
Personnel.
You know, whether it's staffing or personnel related. There's probably a compliance. You know, whether it's staffing or personnel related. There's probably a compliance. I, I'm making stuff up on the fly, so I'm a little, you know, schedule's not as big of a driver, because that's where I'm, a project-driven world, we, we do, that's normally a opportunity. Maybe there's a capital improvement plan, meeting, meeting the objectives outlined each year in the capital improvement plan, finding opportunities to save money, you know, reduce project risk, manage overflow, improve the, the risks posture, the, you know, planning for out-year projects, so on and so forth. There's a lot of interesting moving targets there, but you kind of want to give columns that you can then put, columns of interest, if you will, that you could then put one or multiple objectives or goals in, that you can then provide meaningful, measurable feedback against, so that it's not just five out of five. Good job.
That's, that's my world. Did you crash? No.
So, are, are, are we giving direction? We're sort of the board of directors. You look at it that way.
So, that's why I think, I think we need to define what the columns are.
Okay. I'm, I'm open. I think that's good, getting feedback.
And then Mike would be, with perhaps just individual discussions, or we could then provide that feedback to Mike, and he could just, he could say, I propose, and then we would say, yes, we approve, or no, I'd like to see this one.
So, I think buy-in and feedback of the person being evaluated is important. But if you're just gonna punt it to the CEO, you don't need the board.
No.
No, that's why I think, I think we need, we would want to define what those major categories are that we'd like to see.
Is, is there any way that, walking away, Doug, I should look at it from your perspective and what you think is important? Or are you just saying, come with your best ideas, right? There's, there's an ability to sort of dovetail, because you, I want to know what my colleagues are interested in, so I can come with something that's in the ballpark.
Well, one easy one is budget.
Okay, and we don't have to solve it today, but do, is there a list?
But I think we want to come up with a list of what's in that comp, because ultimately there will be passion points in those. And if, if there's no columns of interest for you, well, you're just gonna.
So, you're saying, come up, and then there's a discussion and consensus on those items? That's what you're proposing, sort of the way you want?
Correct. I think that would be appropriate. And I think that's, that's fine in the timeline we have, because it wouldn't need to be agreed upon until, I'll call it October, November timeframe, when it would be established and approved, and then you'd have the full year to run against those.
I, I, what you're suggesting of, or evaluation things, I've seen in companies that have been very effective for leadership growth, and frankly, you know, good feedback and bonuses when you do exceptionally well, if that's deserved.
So, this year's form?
Yeah.
Well, but, but if, but if you hit your, if you, to Stu's viewpoint, right? I mean, it's not, I mean, when people do exceptionally well, they ought to be incentivized to do it. And if you know where the end is, and you've met the end or exceeded it, then people ought to be, however, and rewards aren't always necessary monetary, but there are other things that can really assist for retention and motivation and, you know, excitement to, to excel in what you do.
So, this year's form we're good with. Somebody's, sounds like he's gonna come up with something for next year. Is that right?
I don't know that we're, well, I don't know that we're proposing any modifications of the form, although I would look, you know, perhaps to Mike.
That may be a fallout.
Yeah, may be a fallout, but that's not, nothing we're talking about is for this evaluation that we're in right now.
Uh, item number six, don't, you're, you're not going anywhere.
I'm not going anywhere. What do you mean?
You got four more than I got.
Come on, we'll get through these fast. So, the fire department, the DJI drones, and a fire chief can speak bad in a minute. They bought one back in 2018, the volunteers did, spent like $2,400. Well, as in 2021, you can't use DJI drones, and the government and stuff, State of Florida outlawed it. So, they came up the program. Last year, we'll let you buy a replacement zone drone, and up to $25,000. And this year, they included the fire departments too. So, we have a drone there. And basically, we trade in our drone, that we spent $2,800, and get a drone, as you see in the council package, that would be actually more suitable and stuff. It has infrared cameras, night, night avoidance. They, we kind of negotiate back and forth, include some stuff, and it comes under the $25,000. So, if you all approve this, Chief Maddox would apply for the funds upfront to pay for it, and then we wouldn't have any money out of our pocket, and we'd just buy it when the money came in. And it could be used for search rescue, if we're, crash scenes, you know, we get, somebody, sometimes like we've, you know, besides drownings, I think we could launch it out there. And it's a pretty neat system. I, I flew it. I know Chief Connor flew it. And it's pretty simple, and you can't crash it and things. And they'd have to be, now, anybody flying it has to be certified or with a licensed person. That's one thing. But I don't know.
Yeah, it's part of what I said. So, basically what happened was back in 2021, that they, back in 2021, basically the Santa Society, they want to get rid of any Chinese type of, you guys are probably familiar with that, all those drones. So, it irritated a lot of the police chiefs, because they had drones. They had bought the DJI drones that now they weren't allowed to use in Florida. So, after about a year, they came up with a, basically a grant, $25 million grant, that were, you were able to turn in the old DJI drones you bought and get a $25,000 credit to buy another drone. If you didn't use the $25,000, you send the money back. But they also have a cash advance option, which we're gonna take. So, we're, we have a vendor, and we found a drone that came in right at $24,996. So, so.
Who's the manufacturer? Who's the manufacturer, just out of curiosity?
Skydio. So, there's five actual manufacturers who are approved through the state. Skydio's probably one of the oldest ones that have been around for a long time.
Yeah.
So, they have a drone, and they're selling a lot of them. The day that we demoed the one, I think West Melbourne bought one, Titusville bought one, and they were headed to Volusia County, all under the $25,000 range. So, basically, it's a grant that's out there to replace your drone. And like Mike had said, the volunteers had bought one back, you know, six years ago, that qualifies. So, it's not gonna be any money out of our own pocket. We're just gonna apply for the grant, the cash advance, send them in the vendor's quote, and then that's basically it. So, there should be no money out of pocket at all for us.
Just out of curiosity, is Aqua Line, does that name sound familiar?
Uh, there was a, there was, I think there was an Aqua Line. There was five.
I was just wondering, that, it was started by a guy I used to work with.
Yeah, that might have been one of them. That sounds familiar.
Yeah, he's from Hartford. I don't know him, but.
Is it Teal Aqua Line? Was it called Teal Aqua Line, or?
I don't think, maybe it is now, but it wasn't.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly. But there were five approved manufacturers out there now. So, all US obviously built type drones.
Um, so, is there a motion?
I have a question, but.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, there, the drones are all off a price sheet that's been negotiated with State of Florida, so we're under their contractual negotiations.
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's kind of what I figured.
Up to $25,000. You can get one more, but you gotta pay out of pocket, so.
Sure. There's always high, there's always more expensive one.
Oh, yeah.
That's what we discussed too, because some of the things were included.
Is there any cost of ownership? We've got all the spares and all that other stuff, so.
Yeah, so it comes with a battery.
Plug it into the EV charger.
Yeah, four total batteries. And, you know, we're, we're under any, we're not in any kind of obligation like the, like the, the cell towers, to even keep it. Once it breaks, it breaks, you know what I mean? We don't have to go buy another drone or replace it.
One, ask the, ask the question.
Yeah.
And it has a three-year warranty with it too, even if it's like crashed and lost?
And then we already have certified drone operators?
So, we have, one of our volunteers has the Part 107. He's a drone pilot. We can take the, the 107. It's like a quick little course that we're gonna have to take, and then we have to take an FAA kind of test, so we're allowed to do it. And I think some of the police might do it as well. So, if we do it online ourselves, it's like 150 bucks for the course and another 140 for the test itself. So.
Yeah, it's pretty easy.
We'll get a couple people. So, that would be our only cost. Is that what you're digging down it?
I just, yeah.
I like that. I like, I like how you're digging on that one.
I could just show up, right? I have my certificates.
Oh, yeah, you got it?
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
You have the trust, or you have the 107?
No, I just have the real pilot.
Oh.
No. That was, that was backhand.
That was good. I liked that. The 555, right?
Yeah.
Ugh.
Lauren, anything?
No, sir.
Brett? All right. Is there a motion to approve the drone replacement grant purchase?
I will, so motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right. Well, any public comment? No, okay. We, we clearly bored everybody. Uh, all those in favor of approving the drone replacement grant, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Stormwater 400 block Oakland, Mike?
Yeah, sorry for getting this added on to the last minute. A couple of things came in today that were, that, at last month's meeting, we discussed, we were holding that project, looking maybe for state funding. We do have the, in a budget to cover 400 block of Oakland upside, you know, pipes going from 12 to 15 inch. We've had the project designed, but getting a couple quotes. And we got some quotes, and Atlantic Development came in, that the lowest, $150,038, $38.15, but they're also the state contractor for it too. So, we're looking forward to move that project. We can put a shovel in the ground pretty quick. There seems like Atlantic, on a couple, like we did a couple of Stormwater things, and we have that Michigan project that's approved, and there are, yeah, it's already unapproved, another thing. We're, they're ready to move forward with those. So, we can get it done quickly.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve Stormwater 400 block Oakland.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, concerns?
We're good with the budget, being able to swallow that?
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor of approving Stormwater 400 block Oakland Avenue, say aye.
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 All opposed. Uh, Council Chamber, Chamber Doors.
So, last month, we had come in, and we only had one quote. And Joe got three quotes now. My memo didn't have the third one in, because it came in late this afternoon. It beat the, the one quote for the $29,740 by just a little couple dollars. But then it concluded all the stucco repair that has to be done, which we just put the price over. So, the price we originally came in with, the ones that did these doors every year, is the cheapest price with having all the work done.
Motion?
So, moved.
All, all in favor of approving the Council Chamber Doors, say aye.
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 All opposed.
Thank you, Joe.
Uh, last and final, Nance Park Bathroom Breeze Way Demo.
We're not demoing the bathrooms, right?
No, we're not demoing the bathrooms. So, yeah. So, it became aware last week, like the beginning of the week, that the, the breezeway that is at the one roof that covers like the breezeway and the six or eight pillars, and they were just disintegrating, and it started leaning. And as we had wind last week, it leaned more. So, we got moved almost like three inches in a week. So, we closed it off on Friday. We have portable bathrooms coming in there. But the idea is to demo those, to make the bathroom safe again. And I think the cheapest price was the $24,000, Joe? Or the $20,000 came in today, right?
$22,000 from tropical demolition. However, they will not.
Yeah.
Be responsible for any damages to the two structures that are on the side of the breezeway.
The bathrooms.
Whereas JC, our second lowest price of $24,000, will accept damage if.
What was the price difference?
$2,000.
$2,000.
Yeah, I was gonna say, without a guarantee, I can get some buddies and a case of beer, you know, and do it for a lot cheaper.
Yeah. Now, I'm already working with the town engineer. We're looking at some prefab things, but in the bathroom, we can change the fascia down the road, and when we get funding and things. But to replace those bathrooms, we know we have to. So, make them ADA compliant a little bit better and things like that, bring it up to standards.
Sure.
And paint them.
And paint them. Orange?
Yeah, we want to give them actually the colors of the playground.
Right.
Yeah.
So, we want to approve, you're giving us the choice to approve one or two, is that right?
Joe's recommending the $24,000.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
JCG.
And that, and that includes the warranty that they won't damage the other buildings?
Correct. If they do, go with their insurance and make it fix it.
Right, right.
Now, after this, Mr. Mayor, there is some work that needs to be done on the structure itself. I've got quotes on that as well.
We just don't know what the number, till we get that removed.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So, I move to, to approve the town manager to enter into an agreement for the demolition of the breezeway area with JCG demolition and construction with the attached quote.
Second, is there a, second?
Second.
Councilman Miller.
Discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor of approving the breezeway demo with JCG demolition, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Paul, you got anything?
Yes, I do. I was asked to bring this up to you. I have advised them that more likely than not, you would answer no. But the town of, of Grant Valkaria has been sued in a very interesting code enforcement case. As some of you are probably aware, certainly Councilman Miller is aware, the US Supreme Court in the last couple of years has been coming out with some rather interesting rulings, where they're really kind of making some wholesale changes to the law. One of them is a case that came out called Jereski, came out a couple of months ago. And in that particular case, the Securities and Exchange Commission found that one of the stock traders was guilty of fraud and caused his clients a lot of money, and they fined him $300,000. The US Supreme Court reversed that decision and said, oh, he should have been given a jury trial. An administrative agency can't make these kinds of decisions. That case now, is now being used to argue that code enforcement can't, can't do what code enforcement does. That any time that you cite somebody for a violation of the code, at, at code enforcement, it's gotta be referred to under the US Constitution for a jury trial. Yeah, exactly. And, and obviously, if this, if this holds true, this is gonna upend the, the entire concept of code enforcement across the state of Florida. So, the town attorney for Grant Valkaria is asking other municipalities in Brevard County to intervene in this case. I've advised them that I would bring it to your attention, however, be given the limited budget of the town, that more likely than not, that you probably will have to defer from, from doing that. So.
Paul, what's intervene? Does intervene mean pony up money?
No, means participate in the case.
So, enjoin to the case?
Enjoin the case, yeah, as a party.
Which means lots of legal fees.
Yeah.
We're not standing to do so. Unless it's all Kyo, it's like a Nick.
I, I suggested to him that what he probably needs to do is contact the legal staff at the Florida League of Cities.
Yeah.
And get them to, you know, participate, which, which he said he would, he, he was doing that. So, but I suspect that what he'll find is, is that most cities will probably say, eh, we're with you, we're with your brother, but in spirit only, exactly.
Definitely a case to pay attention to, though.
Good luck.
Yeah, it's interesting. It's an interesting argument.
Has Craig Condon weighed in on it all?
Pardon me?
Has Craig Condon weighed in on it all?
No, not to my knowledge.
Have other municipalities enjoined and, and said their reasoning why they would?
Cause I don't.
How do you enjoin something like this or even consider it, when we know a fraction of the details, right?
Mike?
I don't know. I haven't, I haven't, I have not pursued it.
Anything to report, Mike?
Um, the only thing I have to report is, we got a late notification this afternoon, that Jim LaRue, our planner for a long time.
Yes.
Is retiring effective the middle of September. So, I've emailed him. He says he's got a list of some people, plus want to reach out to some other cities and see who do, like Melbourne Beach and Indian River Beach is using satellite beach and stuff for their planners. So, is it historical knowledge here? He's been here for a long, long time, as long as I can remember.
Are there, may I, Mr. Mayor, may I ask one question on that? Yeah.
Thank you. Document retention, right? When someone leaves, are there things that he needs to turn over that are very important? Because when people leave, sometimes very important things go with them? Or is most of the stuff he does goes over to BSE and then?
Most of it already came to us that he has. He's working on something right now, so I've got to finish that up on a rezoning request.
But we would have the records, right? All our work, okay, thank you. That's important, right? Because retreading ground and repaying for something is painful.
Yeah, it's not like he has, like our, our engineer has files and stuff that we don't have. But yeah, he has, doesn't have that stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stu?
Nothing.
Doug?
Nothing to report. School's back in session. Drive safely.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Brett?
I had, I know some of you are probably like, oh, you're gonna come with an update on the code? I'd been intentionally waiting, and I will do so next month.
Which code?
All of it. No, I'm just gonna come with certain proposals, and like questions about which ones you want to, which one you want to pursue, and, and some general ideas about some other things. Do you, any idea if he, our planner will be willing to field questions if we have them, even though when he's retired, like?
I can read out.
Okay.
Sign by out.
Okay, that'd be nice. That's it?
All right. Meeting adjourned.
We are flying on. We've checked everything too. We've got a really good friend of the family.
That wasn't as long as I.